Good evening and welcome to the Town of Corder Madara Planning Commission for Tuesday, July 11th, 2023. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Kenny?
Here.
Chair Chase?
Here.
Commissioner Bandell?
Here.
Vice Chair Rizzo?
Here.
Commissioner Boshier?
Just a second to get on here. It takes a minute for attendees to show up. She has one second. Valerie, I'm going to promote you to panelist. She'll be rejoining us as panelist shortly.
Okay. Do you want to show that she's in?
She is present.
Okay, great. Let's join me in a salute to the flag, please. Pledge allegiance.
I O.
To the flag.
United States of America, to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God.
Thank you. And now, as the protocol and order, we need to reelect Officer, the Commission. So this is for Chair and Vice Chair. So we usually do this by asking for a motion or a nominee.
I'd like to nominate Peter Chase for the Chair.
Second?
Second.
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 All right. You want to call a roll on that?
Commissioner Boshier?
Hi.
Commissioner Kenny?
Hi.
Commissioner Bandell?
Yes.
Vice Chair Rizzo?
Right.
And Chair Chase?
Hi.
Motion carries.
Great. And now nominations for Vice Chair. Nomination for that position.
I nominate Jim Rizzo as Vice Chair.
Second.
All right.
Second.
Commissioner Kenny?
Hi.
Commissioner Bandell?
Yes.
Vice Chair Rizzo?
Hi.
Commissioner Boshier?
Hi.
And Chair Chase?
Hi.
Motion carries.
Thank you. That's great. Okay. We're formed.
We don't like change, do we?
Call it what you may. Right. Okay. So, thank you. At this time, we always open the meeting to public comment for that which is not on tonight's agenda. If there is somebody online that has a hand raised, they may do so and join the meeting. If Tracy has anybody in that department.
I don't see any hands raised at this time. And no, no emails either. Chair Chase?
Okay. Then we'll close that public comment seeing as there's no one else in the room but us. So it's the end of that discussion. We have nothing on the consent calendar tonight, and there are no continued hearings or new hearings. We just have business items tonight. We have three things. One is a discussion of the renovation reach codes. Second is a preliminary review of 700 Tamil Pious Drive. And third is a housing element community video to watch. Martha will present that. But let's get back to the first item, which is a discussion of the renovation reach codes. This is led by Climate Action and Adaptation Coordinator Phoebe Golden and Town Manager.
Excellent. So thank you, Chair Chase and members of the Commission. I just wanted to take this opportunity to introduce Phoebe to the Planning Commission. Phoebe started in, was it in November, December of last year? December, I'm sorry. December of last year as the town's first Climate Action and Adaptation Coordinator and has been a great addition to our team. And really, from the get-go, has just sort of taken a climate action work plan under her capable hands and sort of moved it forward. And this is a big part of that work, what you're going to be hearing tonight, which was developing with council direction some reach codes for single-family remodels and additional measures or types of construction, including EV charging stations or additional requirements for EV charging stations or infrastructure. And you'll hear about a change to potential change to definitions of new construction, which would have effects on electrification for new buildings. So with that, I am going to turn it over to Phoebe, who is going to give you a presentation.
Thank you, Adam, and good evening, Commissioners. As Adam said, my name is Phoebe Golden. I'm the town's Climate Action and Adaptation Coordinator. And I'm going to be giving you an overview tonight of some potential changes to the town's green building code that we're considering and that we'd like your feedback on. So to start with the basics, reach codes are local amendments to the California Building Standards Code, or Title 24. And Title 24 includes many parts, including the plumbing and mechanical codes, the energy code, and the green building code, also called CalGreen. And so the reach codes that we'll be covering tonight are amendments to these four sections of Title 24. So why are we considering adopting reach codes? One main reason is to reduce greenhouse gas emissions to limit climate change impacts. So in Corder Madara, the largest sources of greenhouse gas emissions are transportation, which is account for 73% of all emissions, and natural gas use in buildings, which is another 19% of total community-wide emissions. The reach codes can address both sectors by facilitating additional EV charging opportunities and requiring energy savings in homes. And I'm sure you're all aware that Corder Madara, like much of California, is already experiencing some of the impacts of climate change, including sea level rise, flooding, and drought impacts. And so reach codes are one tool that can help us reduce emissions and ensure a livable future here. And the town also has a goal in our Climate Action Plan that was accepted by council to reduce emissions 40% below 1990 levels by 2030, which is similar to the state's targets. So this can also help us work towards that goal. In addition to that climate benefit and the goal of reducing greenhouse gas emissions, reach codes can also improve community health and well-being. Burning fossil fuels, like the gas in your car or natural gas in your water heater or home furnace, releases not just carbon dioxide that contributes to global warming, but also air pollutants that have been linked to multiple health impacts, including asthma, heart attacks, and lung cancer. So reducing the use of fossil fuels in buildings can also reduce these health impacts for our residents. Reach codes often also increase the energy efficiency of buildings, which can reduce energy bills. And local amendments to the California Energy Code in particular are required to be cost-effective over the lifetime of the measures by the state. And finally, another reason that we're talking about these code changes now is that there are state and regional regulations that are going to be going into effect in the coming years that are going to require electrification for certain appliances. So our state and regional air quality regulators have adopted regulations to eliminate air pollution from gas, water, and space heaters, which are the largest users of natural gas in homes and therefore the largest emitters of air pollutants. At the state level, the California Air Resources Board, or CARB, will require all space and water heaters to be zero emission by 2030, which is to help meet the federal health-based standard for ozone, which is a major component of smog. And CARB will also be requiring all new cars and light-duty trucks sold in the state to be zero emission by 2035. We're going to need some additional charging capacity to charge all those electric vehicles. And in the Bay Area, some of these changes are coming even sooner. Our Bay Area Air Quality Management District, or BACMUD, has recently adopted rule changes that will require regulating the nitrous oxide emissions from water and space heaters. So all water heaters sold or installed in the Bay Area must be zero emission by 2027 and space heaters by 2029. These are requirements that we know are coming pretty soon. And so the actions that we take now in Corder Madara can help prepare residents for this transition. So some background on how we got to the codes that we're considering now. Last year, the Marin County Sustainability Team developed these three model reach codes. One is the requirement that all new construction be all-electric. Also, requirements for single-family renovations over 750 square feet with some additional energy efficiency requirements for those projects. And third, electric vehicle readiness and infrastructure requirements for both new construction and renovations. The county developed these requirements over a year and did an extensive engagement process, including working groups with local building officials and planners, community workshop, community survey, and presentations to many of the climate and sustainability advisory bodies countywide. Their goal, in addition to the climate and health goals, was also to develop standard codes that could be adopted countywide and provide some consistency in green building codes. And you can see in the last, the column on the right, the current adoption status countywide. It is currently not very consistent. There's been some variation in how jurisdictions have adopted these. And many jurisdictions like Corder Madara are still evaluating these codes. So in the fall of last year, Corder Madara adopted the portion of these codes that pertain to new construction only. So that's the all-electric new construction requirement and then enhanced EV requirements for new construction only. And this was last fall. At that point, Town Council asked staff to conduct some additional community engagement work and analysis on the renovation components and bring back a recommendation by August of this year. So the two parts of the county's model code that Corder Madara has not adopted are the energy efficiency and electrification requirements for single-family renovations over 750 square feet and the additional EV requirements for renovation projects. In addition to those two codes, staff is also considering two other amendments that would better align our current codes with other jurisdictions and with our climate goals as well. The first is a modification, was just number three on this list, is a modification to our existing all-electric ordinance. As it's currently written, our all-electric ordinance only applies to newly constructed buildings, which are defined as buildings that have never been used or occupied before for any purpose. And this is at odds with a lot of other jurisdictions that have an all-electric requirement, which define the point where a substantial remodel becomes a new building. And so staff is considering requiring renovation projects that demolish at least 50% of an existing structure to be all-electric. And at that point, they would be considered a new structure. Another potential revision, number four here, that's in line with the town's existing all-electric ordinance, although not the same, would be to prohibit the expansion of natural gas infrastructure in existing homes. And this change would address current discrepancy where new buildings aren't allowed to install any natural gas, but existing homes don't have any limit on the how far they increase their natural gas use. And so the types of projects that would most likely be impacted under this policy would be installing new gas appliances. For example, outdoor gas fire pit that was piped in, a new gas fireplace, but it would not impact the replacement or the relocation of existing gas appliances in homes. And it also wouldn't impact outdoor appliances that run on propane that are sort of mobile. Those would not be included. So these are the total of the four changes that staff are considering and that we'd like your feedback on. And I'm going to go over the first three in some more detail and provide some examples of what projects would be impacted by them. For this first one, the county's model reach code for single-family renovations applies to remodels and additions of 750 square feet or more. It has some mandatory measures as well as a target energy savings score. And there's a few exemptions to this code as well. So for newer buildings built on or after January 1st, 2011, those buildings are exempted because they're built under a much newer building code with, and tend to be a lot more energy efficient than the older buildings, which make up a larger portion of our building stock. All-electric buildings are also exempt. And there's a low-income exemption for resident owners who are enrolled in PG&E's CARE or FIRA programs, which are energy rate-paying assistance programs. Those resident owners that qualify under that exemption would not be required to meet the target energy savings score, but would still be required to install the two mandatory measures. So those mandatory measures are lighting measure and electric readiness measure. The lighting measure calls for replacing all non-LED lights with LEDs and installing photocell controls on outdoor lights so that they turn off during the day automatically. The electric readiness measures are only for projects that include a kitchen or laundry room renovation or include upgrading the service panel. The electric readiness measures vary by project type, but typically, electric readiness is involves installing the wiring for certain electric appliance to be installed in the future. So for the laundry room or the kitchen room, the project would be required to be electric-ready for the relevant appliance for that room. So the dryer for the laundry room and the cooktop for the kitchen. And additionally, those projects would be required to either upgrade the panel to 200 amps, their main electrical service panel, or provide load calculations showing how that home could meet all-electric end uses on their existing panel size of at least 100 amps. So the panel upgrade is not always needed, and the intent here is not to require a lot of panel upgrades, but it is to have residents think carefully about how they might be all-electric in the future. Because with that careful planning, it is possible to electrify on a 100-amp panel by selecting efficient appliances that are sized appropriately for the home. And more of those are coming out every day, more efficient appliances. And then the third trigger here is if the service panel is upgraded, the project could choose from a list of electric readiness measures that are included in the code and essentially be electric-ready for two appliances of their choosing. Those are the mandatory measures. In addition to those, projects that meet the 750 threshold are required to meet a target energy savings score by choosing from this menu of energy efficiency and electrification measures. Most of Corder Madara is in Climate Zone 3, which has a target score of six. And each of those six points is equivalent to 1 million BTUs of energy savings each year. This flexible compliance table was developed by the statewide reach code team, which found that this method is cost-effective as required by the state. And the goal of this flexible compliance table is to let homeowners decide which energy savings measure is best for their home and the scope of the project. So for example, a project could comply by installing all of the insulation measures shown here. So the water heating, water heater insulation, air sealing, attic insulation, and new ducts and duct ceilings, plus one of the lower energy savings electrification measure, like a heat pump clothes dryer. Or a project could comply by installing just one measure that results in high energy savings, like a heat pump water heater. Some existing measures can be used to comply with this table. It depends on the measure. So the model code, as I mentioned, is triggered by a renovation that's more than 750 square feet. And staff would plan to calculate the renovated square footage using the same method that our fire department does when they're determining whether fire sprinklers are required for a large remodel project. The 750 square feet is the sum of all the area that's added or remodeled in the space. So in the example shown here, there's two new rooms being added. So the entire area of those new rooms would be counted towards the threshold. And additionally, the kitchen dining space is being modified by a wall removal and some other changes. So the square footage of that space would be counted as well. This project, based on our fire department calculations, is a 736-square-foot remodel. So it's not meeting that 750 threshold, and it wouldn't trigger the requirements in the county's model reach code. But if it was just 20 feet bigger, then it would trigger them. So this is an example of a project that would have triggered those requirements. It's a 1,300, over 1,300-square-foot renovation interior remodel, including the kitchen, master bath, living and dining rooms, and a small addition. So this is a much larger project that would have triggered that requirement. The second renovation reach code developed by the county requires additional EV charging infrastructure in certain renovations to prepare for future electric vehicles. For single-family homes that upgrade their main electrical service panel, they would be required to be EV-ready, which means having the electrical capacity and raceways installed and wiring installed for a future EV to be charged there. It doesn't go as far as requiring an EV charging station installed, but it goes further than just having the raceway, but no wiring. And this would only be for single-family home renovations that include a panel upgrade already in their project scope. For multifamily and non-residential renovations, there's two project types that would trigger requirements. The first is, again, if the service panel is modified, the project would be required to install or add designated electrical capacity for 20% of onsite parking spaces to be Level 2 EV. And then if the parking lot surface is modified by removing paving or curbing, the project would be required to either add raceway or conduit to at least 50% of exposed parking spaces or conduit to 20% and EV charging stations to 5%. So staff is considering a few modifications to this reach code based on some of the feedback we received at our community workshop. And one is to eliminate the first option under the parking lot surface modification so that projects would be required to install at least 20% conduit and 5% charging stations so that any project that's modifying their parking lot would be required to actually install charging stations, not just conduit. And second, we're considering for our non-residential projects, establishing a valuation trigger instead of the panel upgrade trigger out of some concerns with how that panel upgrade trigger would work with multi-tenant situations that are sharing a parking lot. How would it be determined which parking spaces are one tenants when there's multiple tenants? All right, so this final code is a proposed modification to our existing all-electric threshold, adding this definition of when a substantial remodel would be considered a new building. So under the proposed modification, a renovation project that meets any of these three conditions over a 36-month period would be required to comply with the town's existing all-electric ordinance. And so the three conditions are if more than 50% of the existing interior walls have their wall coverings removed on one or more sides. If more than 50% of the existing interior or exterior wall and roof framing is altered, removed, or replaced, or if the proposed conditioned floor area of an addition or alteration more than doubles the existing building's permitted conditioned floor area. This 50% threshold was the most common threshold among other jurisdictions with similar requirements in their all-electric codes. It's also similar to what our fire department considers when looking at major remodels. They also have a 50% threshold for when they require fire sprinklers to be installed. But they calculate that threshold based on the square footage, like the single-family remodel code that we just looked at. So it's a little bit different. And we expect that these thresholds are harder to reach and would affect fewer projects than the fire sprinkler 50% threshold. And I think this definition is a little bit easier to understand with some examples. So this is the project we looked at earlier, which did trigger the, was over 750 square feet and would have triggered the single-family renovation reach code. And it also triggered the fire sprinkler requirement. So FIRE calculated this remodel to be a 50% remodel based on the square footage affected. But looking at the walls that are modified, the project only affected 33% of the walls. So this project would not have been required to be all-electric under the proposed amendment. It's falling down. And this is a project that would have likely met the first criteria. So more than 50% of the existing interior walls were either removed or they had their wall coverings removed. The walls shown in green here are ones that were planned to be demolished. And in addition to those walls, the drywall was removed on most of the other walls in the building. So that's how the project would have met that 50% threshold. And for reference, this project did require fire sprinklers, and FIRE calculated this project to be an 88% remodel. This is an example of a project that likely would have met the third condition, so doubling the conditioned space was a conversion of a lower level, which is the floor plan that's shown on the screen. So that area was previously unconditioned mechanical space, and it was converted to a conditioned living space. There was also a small addition to the main floor. So this project likely would have been required to be all-electric under the proposed modification. This project also included a panel upgrade, so it would have triggered the EV infrastructure requirement to be EV-ready. One of the main asks from Town Council for staff evaluating these codes was to conduct some more community engagement in addition to the work that was done by the county in developing the codes. So staff began this engagement effort for Corder Madara's codes earlier this year, included digital and in-person outreach, outreach at the farmer's market, a project webpage that shared about these engagement opportunities, updates in the town newsletter and on social media. The town also held a community workshop on May 24th in the evening in a hybrid format. And prior to that workshop, mailers were sent to all Corder Madara residents announcing the workshop. And the event was also advertised on the reader board outside the community center in the week before the workshop. At that workshop, we launched a feedback survey, which was open until June 16th. And that survey was promoted in the town newsletter for a couple more weeks after the workshop. And this topic has also been discussed at our Climate Action Committee at a couple meetings, and most recently on May 31st. And the committee expressed their support for the changes that have been presented and even support for going beyond the county's requirements. Despite the outreach that was conducted, we saw some fairly low engagement on this topic. We only had about 14 attendees at the workshop, although there have been more views of the recording since then. And we had about 25 responses to the survey. And so the feedback that I'm about to share with you is not necessarily representative of all Corder Madara residents. Overall, the feedback was fairly mixed, while about 68% of respondents did support the town taking steps to prepare for future required electrification. There wasn't a lot of consensus on what those steps should be. And I think that reflects that this can be a sometimes controversial topic and also a complicated topic. And the highest level agreement that we saw was for the EV charging requirements, especially for the requirements for multifamily and non-residential properties. And that's what And that's what's shown in the graph here. Some of the concerns that we heard from community members were about the electrical grid capacity to handle increased electrical load and its reliability, especially during power outages, as well as the cost of these requirements, especially for those living on fixed incomes. So I just want to go through briefly some responses to these concerns and how staff are thinking about them and how they apply to these codes. The first is the electrical grid capacity. These code requirements are not expected to result in an immediate large increase in electricity demand. Certainly, if every home in Corder Medera went all-electric tomorrow, we'd have a big issue, but this is expected to impact only a few projects a year. And so it'd be supporting a more gradual transition to all-electric buildings. And this is a graph from our electricity provider MCE showing how they forecast demand well in advance. And their MCE and PG&E are required by the state to have enough generating capacity to provide 118% of peak demand on a monthly basis. So they're planning for this increase in demand. They're watching what local governments are doing closely and they're required to have more electricity than they need. This second concern is a really common misconception about electric appliances and electric versus gas appliances. Most modern gas appliances that are sold today require electricity to operate. And so during a power outage, they're not any better than an electric appliance. Your gas furnace, for example, its thermostat requires electricity to operate, its fans require electricity to blow air into your, throughout your house. The only appliance that might still work during an outage is your gas stove, if you can light it with a match carefully. However, your hood fan won't work, so that's not the best from an indoor air quality standpoint. As we've covered the health impacts of burning natural gas in your homes. So during outages, there are some ways to power your home and that don't involve fossil fuels. PG&E runs a program for customers that are reliant on devices for medical reasons. Solar and battery backup is an option for keeping some essential home functions running. And increasingly, electric vehicles are also capable of serving as a backup battery for your home. And then one of the big concerns we've heard is about the cost of these requirements. And unfortunately, it's pretty difficult to put a pin on what exactly that number is, just because there's such a variation and every home is different. So in the staff report, I've tried to provide some numbers that give a sense of that range and how it can really vary depending on the home features. Typically, the cost of compliance with these requirements specifically is fairly low compared to the cost overall of a major remodel and large projects like the one that these codes would apply to. And the codes do include low-income exemptions for those who really can't afford to make these changes. There's also a lot of money out there right now to help residents make these changes from the federal level with tax credits through the Inflation Reduction Act, state-level rebates, even local rebates, like Electrify Marin, which is run by the county. And so these are some resources that are available on our town website, on the Climate and Sustainability webpage. And staff are available to help point residents in those directions. So finally, there's a important legal caveat to mention about that's going to impact how and whether the town moves forward with these codes. There's an ongoing lawsuit against the city of Berkeley, which was the first jurisdiction to adopt an all-electric new construction requirement. Shortly after they adopted that ordinance, the California Restaurant Association sued the city, arguing that the ordinance was preempted by the Federal Energy Policy and Conservation Act. And earlier this year, a three-jazz panel of the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals reversed a previous district court decision and sided with the California Restaurant Association and ruling deciding that the ordinance was preempted. And while Berkeley has filed a petition to have the full Ninth Circuit Court revisit that decision, in the meantime, their decision is binding for all jurisdictions within the Ninth Circuit. And so based on the recommendation of our town attorney, staff do not anticipate bringing ordinance to town council until the results of this case are final. And we should know later this fall whether the case will be reheard or whether the current decision will stand. So in the meantime, staff are moving forward with evaluating and drafting these codes so they can be moved forward if appropriate when we know more. The draft ordinance will be presented to our Climate Action Committee next Wednesday as the next step in the public evaluation process. And staff are also continuing to work on several efforts to promote the same goals that these reach codes are intended to promote while we're waiting to hear the results of the case. So that includes education and outreach work, working with our Climate Action Committee to inform residents and businesses about the benefits of electrification. We're also working on another item on the work plan about increasing public charging, EV charging opportunities around town and also participating in a countywide electrification plan development, which will provide some additional next steps for the town to consider. That's it for my presentation. Thank you. Have anything to add, Adam?
Yeah, just, I will say, great presentation. Thank you very much. I learned a lot. No, but I, I think we really wanted to bring this to the planning commission, given obviously the expertise that the individual members of the commission have regarding this subject matter. What we're asking you for this evening is comment and feedback. We're not asking you for a vote this evening like we have on some other ordinances. But we're happy to take your comments either individually, but it would be great to get any of those comments that are sort of consensus-driven. If there are things that sort of the commission as a whole feel are really critical to include or change or consider as part of this ordinance, we would love to hear that this evening. So thank you. I think both Phoebe and I are available for questions.
It was a good presentation. There's a lot to chew on here. There's a lot of material. It's not simple necessarily. So I expect that these members are going to have some questions here. And there's a lot of commentary, so per your request, we'll try to distill this into some collective consciousness and some individual concerns. I suspect there will be some differing opinions here on these different areas. So with that said, Valerie, you're there. I know.
I am.
Let's start with you and you've got a heartstring for this stuff, so dive in.
I have questions. So Phoebe, thank you so much. Amazing presentation and super clear and understandable. I do have questions in regards to a couple of the things that you mentioned about the exemption and then later how it actually evolves. So you mentioned that if the tenant for the single-family renovation is reusing the existing appliances, they would be exempt. But would that be also true if their renovation is more than 750 square feet? I believe that wasn't extremely clear.
So for the single-family renovation reach code, the exemption is for low-income resident owners. Additionally, in the measure table, if there's a measure that's already installed in the home and those could be used to comply in some cases. So if a house already had solar installed, there's a measure that's solar and electric readiness measures. So if they already have solar, they can just install the electric readiness measure and comply. And all of those requirements are only for projects that are over 750 square feet.
I see. So they will be able to avoid electrify completely if they do have certain measures completed.
So the 750 square foot threshold is not for full electrification. It's just for achieving that target energy saving score of six.
Got it. All right. Thank you. And then they had a question about the commercial properties. So we talked a lot about the single-family renovations. And I do wonder if there are any measures on how we can help our commercial property landlords to electrify. For instance, if the tenant in a leased space is undergoing a major renovation, how would we calculate the need for electrifying the space? Obviously, that will be on landlord and obviously it will impact the, all of the tenants. For instance, like a shopping mall or, you know, like similar situations. But I feel like we didn't really cover that in this particular presentation. So it would be great to understand how the commercial properties would be impacted by this as well and how we can help them to, and incentivize them to electrify as well.
Yeah, you're right. That's not something that was really addressed in the model codes that the county developed last year. And so the 750 square foot threshold only applies to single-family homes. The 50% threshold for all-electric would also comply, apply to commercial properties as our current all-electric ordinance also does with some exemptions, for example, for commercial kitchens. I think maybe part of the reason that that wasn't addressed by the county in their codes is that it is a complicated topic. I think commercial and multifamily were both left out of that renovation reach code. But it is certainly something that we're thinking about as part of the countywide electrification plan development. So I think that's something that we'll see some additional strategies in that plan look.
It certainly would be helpful kind of to see the comparison as well. And the 50% requirement is complicated because the building is one, right? And if the tenant is renovating only portion, their leased space, it's definitely below the 50%, but the impact is still significant within their leased space. And even their footprint for the, their carbon footprint would be also impactful if they do electrify only their portion of the space as well. So it'd be great to kind of see the, some requirements on that matter as well. And then I believe, okay, my last question is if there is an undergoing renovation and they are electrifying, are we going to also put some kind of requirement on the low efficient, inefficient energy appliances? For instance, that do have the energy star label or equivalent?
So for, this is for full home electrification projects?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, so the measure table that was included in the draft ordinance has some more specifics on exactly which appliances would be allowable to reach the target energy saving score. The only appliances that are, that are in there are heat pump and induction appliances, which are highly efficient. And there is a additional energy savings associated with the high, even higher efficiency. There's different ratings for heat pumps. So there's the higher efficiency ones do result in a higher energy saving score and they're valued higher in that table.
Great. And then just rhetorical, and maybe not rhetorical, but the question is, are we going to dive in into the water codes in the same level as the energy codes as well, somewhere as well? Because I feel like those are relevant as well.
The water codes?
The plumbing codes.
Okay. So the plumbing codes, the reason I mentioned those at the beginning is that the prohibition on expansion of fuel gas infrastructure would be an amendment to the plumbing and mechanical codes, but not directly related to water, if that's your question.
No, I'm curious more if we are going to have similar approach as we have with the energy codes to the plumbing codes, where we would demand certain water reduction under certain base level.
Yeah, well, we do have, first off, I think MMWD is the agency that really sets the, a lot of the water use requirements and codes. We have adopted water efficiency landscape ordinance, which, I don't know if that was, came from MMWD, came from their board in adopting those. Actually, Martha, yeah.
Yeah, we, because I think about two years ago, the town adopted a water-efficient landscape ordinance to comply with state legislation surrounding outdoor landscape. And it was, I believe, a draft ordinance that the, a water district put together that all jurisdictions adopted. And the water district does do audits and inspections and they also review building permit plans that include landscaping to ensure compliance with the ordinance.
They've had great water ordinance in the past as well. So a lot of the water efficiency regulations are coming from the Marin Municipal Water District. And I frankly think they, they're required to, but I think we'd have a hard time doing different regulations than other jurisdictions due to their authority on water usage. But I'm not sure about that. I'd have to check further.
Thank you. Yeah, I was more wondering about if we can create more like a minimum threshold for the meeting below the base level that municipality requires typically. For instance, demanding more of a low-flow fixture usage in, in the interior space, right? Not just kind of go beyond the threshold that has been established. But I understand the answer, so I'm good.
I would just say, yeah, it's, it's definitely something that's possible to consider in the future. It's just not part of the scope of our work and assignment at this time.
Makes sense.
Okay, is that for the moment, Valerie?
It is for the moment.
Hey, well, thank you. And Mr. Rizzo, you're there in person? Questions?
Hi, can anybody hear me?
Yes.
Yes, well, welcome, Phoebe. Glad to have you. I'm echoing, aren't I? Glad to have you on board and thank you for the presentation. I had a few questions. Some might be a little technical, some may not. I was wondering what happens to the gas line if you reach the threshold and you have to go all-electric? Would the requirement be to put a valve at the street and pull it down your property? Or what are we doing with the gas line that might leak in the future? You know, because that could be a cost, an expense to the owner. Is there, was there any talk about what we do with the, with the existing gas line once we cap it at the meter? Because meters are typically on the house, which is, you know, you've got, you could have hundreds of feet of pipe.
Right. Yes, I, we didn't have a detailed discussion about that. I believe it would just be capped at the property. And there's a sort of larger, longer-term conversation taking place about how do we then actually decommit of those gas lines?
All right, yeah, I think we, I could talk about that in discussion. I just wanted to know if you guys had a plan for that.
Do you have any recommendations on that? We'd be happy to hear them.
Well, I, you know, we we talk about the leaking of it. That's what I I'm concerned about because it there is a lateral. I mean, it's it's gonna be very expensive to bring it down back to the lateral is what I'm getting at. So it's something to think about. I don't have that answer. Um, the the other question I had is um there was some language in in the new ordinance about barbecues and. Are we still going to allow the propane barbecues and things like that in the backyard that aren't hyped?
Yes, the existing exemptions that are in our all electric ordinance for new construction would apply to any. Uh remodels required to electrify under the change.
No, I mean, in general, if you have a new house, can you put use a propane barbecue with a tank? I I'm just asking because that would be a something you could use if there was a power outage.
Yes. Propane is permitted.
Okay, and then when you guys were doing your community outreach, did was there a specific question uh regarding fireplaces and cooktops? I know a lot of people like to cook in our community and um are very fond of their big wolf range. Uh, I should say cooktop. Um, every we could all go with with the with the electric oven, but I know people are really fond of their ranges and their fireplaces. And I know that uh with this new ordinance, people would be giving up some of those luxuries and I'm I'm wondering, I haven't built a. Custom house without a fireplace ever. So I was just curious if we got any feedback from that.
We did not receive any specific comments about that and the only. Projects that would be required to remove a gas appliance like that would be the fifty percent. Um, remodels again, which is a small number of projects a a year. Uh but no, we didn't receive any specific comments on that.
But we're allowed to uh replace a a if someone has a leak in their gas line, they can replace that gas line and keep their fixtures. Is what you I I think you had said earlier, correct?
Yes, that's right. The the way it's written in the ordinance is there's no expansion of natural gas.
Mm hmm. Okay, and then um I have another question regarding how we calculate. Um, I think there was something in there about exterior and interior walls as the fifty percent rule. Um, a lot of people in the remodeling our house will replace windows and siding. So um how do you calculate that would be a hundred percent walls? And windows. Um, is a window wall or a a door considered? Uh, if I've replaced my sliding glass door that's eight foot, is that considered part of the remodel?
And typically, how the fire department considers it, window replacements are not considered part of the remodel. And are they're not counted towards uh renovated space if there's not an additional modification? That first condition is says fifty percent, if fifty percent of. Interior wall coverings are removed, so it's only looking at the interior wall coverings being removed.
I thought it was something on exterior um on one of those slides. I just.
Right, it's comparing it to the total linear footage of all the walls.
Correct, okay. I just want to make sure that if someone's like trying to re-side their house and making it woolly approved and redoing the windows. That they might not trigger something that could affect them financially that they weren't prepared to pay for. And we want to make sure that they can move forward with with something if uh they're trying to seem seem to me that. If it's interior space, that makes more sense.
Right, yeah, that case it would not would not apply.
Yeah, just a little bit more on the intent of those provisions and those were developed with um the help of our. Interim building official at the time, Thomas. Um, you know, it it was sort of an evaluation of at what point are. Is the structure sort of opened up enough where really doing the rewiring and all the renovation. Needed to um basically electrify a home become sort of. You know, uh more viable from a cost, I think essentially, um in a labor standpoint. Wasn't, we're already sort of well into um the 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 remodel of the home and the opening up the walls and so forth that. It became part of a uh, you know, relatively um minimal. It minimally evasive procedure to do so. Um, and that was based on on Thomas's expertise and the obviously in construction and whatnot.
And I think um my last question just comes about with the parking for um the commercial spaces. I know this is going to get kind of sticky and might need a little bit more thought because in a mall situation, they've got shared parking. Um, and uh, you know, upgrading a um. A parking lot is usually a landlord's responsibility and if it's triggered by a um. By a tenant that that could get a little sticky. I'm I'm trying to how how to figure that one out. Um, and the other thing is with the accessibility parking spaces, I I think. I don't know this, I don't uh but can you use um an electrical uh a. A charging station ADA space as a regular ADA space or you're gonna are we gonna require to have two accessible spaces which might eliminate a parking space? In that case, maybe the town would have a relaxation on their their parking count to allow that to happen. You know, because it takes more space for an accessible spot.
Right, I do believe the county's code includes um provisions stating that uh EV charging space can. Count towards the minimum parking requirements. I don't recall seeing anything specific to accessible spaces. And whether an accessible EV space would count towards the accessible space requirements. And so that's something you can look into.
Yeah, I I think it it could be done. I'm just, you know, I think as a town, we need to be prepared to maybe. Um, and well, I could talk more about this later, but you know, have a relaxation so the number, the count number can come down so we can accommodate. You know, some of the other codes, because you'll lose a space if you need to get another accessible space in there and on some of these.
Sorry, um, uh Jim, are you are you saying? I think you're referring to the the requirement that you need to have certain number of accessible charging stations. When you build out electric uh EV charging stations, right?
Yeah, a percentage of them, so.
Presumably those would, I don't know, I mean, maybe the question is, uh do those new accept new ADA spaces count? Um, uh, can you, I mean, basically, do they count to the total required ADA spaces? Um, on the site or is it in addition?
Yeah, just uh ma- maybe Commissioner, um, can you might have more information, you might do more commercial work than I. Uh, I was just curious on it because.
That, that's a good one.
Um, but some of it, anyway, those are all my questions and I could talk more about some of the things um in my comments and thank you very much. I appreciate it.
All right, thank you, Jim. Um, I want to move over here to Margaret and see if she's ready to ask questions of staff.
Yeah, I I had one, um, I just needed one uh first clarification that I'm part of the. Um. Uh, staff report and I see that the pages aren't numbered, so that's gonna be. With a fault, but it's the page that faces the blue chart. The table one. And it says the same ex- uh on the next page underneath the section uh fifty percent renovation threshold. The same exceptions in the town's current all electric ordinance would apply to renovations. Meeting the fifty percent threshold. So what's listed under there are exceptions that don't have to meet. Uh, that don't need to make. The renovations. What is that? What are those?
Yeah, so those are our current all electric ordinance, so it requires new buildings to be. All electric with no natural gas infrastructure, except in these cases. So. Um, portable outdoor appliances are allowed.
Right.
Food service establishments are allowed to have natural gas. Um, attached ADUs are allowed to use natural gas if they're already in a home that uses natural gas. Um, so those are the exemptions to our current all electric for new construction requirement. And these um new, these renovation, major renovation projects. That would be essentially considered new construction under this modification would also have those exemptions.
So a- and the last one, projects that have previously received entitlements, does that mean projects? That have gone through, uh that have been permitted already?
Yes.
Okay, um. Okay, so ADUs, accessory dwelling units that are not attached.
Are currently required to be all electric.
All electric, okay. That clears that up, thank you. So, um, what about schools?
Um, I don't know that our code treats them any differently, yeah.
Yeah, I think those are just non-residential um uses. Um, and the the code really doesn't address those um uses specifically at this point.
Okay, um, I saw also one comment on the side of one of the slides and it talked about some comments that seniors made. About the burden of uh the cost on seniors. Did did anyone address that?
Yeah, so those comments about the cost burden on on fixed income residents and those. Are could be addressed in a a couple ways. One is those low income exemptions, so for residents that qualify for. PG&E's care or FERA programs, those rate assistance programs, um they're exempt from the. Flexible compliance table meeting that target energy saving score. Um, and then in this all electric code, there's also a uh cost burden exemption that's at the. At the discretion of the building official.
Okay.
One one thing just to note on costs and I think, you know, th- these don't um. These requirements don't obviously kick in unless you're doing a pretty significant project already. It's not like we're. You know, you you're either renovating seven hundred and fifty square feet of your home already, um which is these days costs quite a bit of money. Or you're doing a fifty percent, you know, demolishing fifty percent essentially of your home and then building it back. So it's. Um, this doesn't affect the i- individuals on fixed incomes that aren't doing anything other than, you you know, maybe they're doing a small kitchen remodel. That's not gonna trigger these requirements.
So.
It is over a three-year period, I should note, though. It is cumulative, yeah.
Over what? A three-year period?
Uh renovations, yeah, that would. Or any of these thresholds would be.
But sometimes in an older home, you need to put in a new electrical panel.
Yes.
And and so how would that?
No, that's true.
How would that affect somebody who was on a fixed income?
Right, so the only requirement that would trigger would being EV ready, so having.
Would be what?
Would be the EV readiness requirement. So when they upgrade that panel, they'd be required to leave a forty amp. Space in there for a future EV charger and have the conduit and wiring for that future charger installed.
Okay, um. Which leads right into my next question. For the EV, uh. A- and it it this is, this actually, as I'm thinking of it, has to do with the commercial space, but it was last year or the year before. Where they wanted to put in EV parking units or or. I don't know what you would call them. Um, in in a in a commercial parking lot in in a town, in the town center, I believe it was. And there was a whole discussion because the people putting them in wanted to run advertisements. And so, um, I'm wonder, I I'm just throwing it out there that that. Became a very controversial kind of thing that went on it um and didn't get passed in the end, as I remember. Um, and so I think that when you're requiring EV parking in in lots, there have to be a lot of. Uh. Information and rules around what what they can contain and what they shouldn't contain. Um, whether advertising is appropriate, what kind, you know, all sorts of stuff like that. Um. And I guess the rest of my questions aren't questions or comments.
And just on that, we do still have regulations regarding relating to signage in our um zoning code. Or it's in our building, no, chapter fifteen, it's a separate section of the code does still regulate signage. Um, and so those wouldn't be permitted. I mean, somebody could apply for the larger signs again and we could go through that whole process.
Is that considered signage?
It is. That's how we interpreted those digital boards and whatnot.
Okay.
Okay, there you go, Margaret. Is it? Okay, then we're off to Daniel here. Oh, I'm sure he's got some good questions.
Uh, well, thank you for a a good presentation, Phoebe. Um. Yeah, I'm try- uh, I just want to make sure I understand um that the seven hundred and fifty square feet relates to the reach code. Energy reach code uh and is not related to uh necessarily related to. Uh, being carbon neutral appliances or heating air conditioning.
Correct.
Um. Uh. And the basis of the seven hundred and fifty square feet, uh, which is based on the sprinkler requirement. Have we looked at whether that, I don't know how where that number came from, it may be developed forty years ago by Fire Marshal. Uh, have we looked at whether the seven fifty uh makes sense in terms of uh energy code? Um, and also, uh. Uh, I have questions about um. Uh, the part where replacing a wall or covering of a wall would uh would affect. Uh would then take the adjacent room into the seven hundred and fifty square feet. Uh, so if you have a wall between two spaces, if you take the drywall off on one side, does that automatically trigger the room next to it? Or do you have to take the drywall off on both sides to trigger it? I've got more questions but related, but.
Yeah, so for the first question, that seven fifty square foot threshold actually comes from the county, not from our fire code. So that's a a threshold that the county developed as part of their process when they're developing these codes. Um, and we unfortunately don't have a lot of permit data. That allows us to really do a detailed analysis of how many projects that would impact. Um, other jurisdictions have, well, at least one other jurisdiction has lowered that threshold. Um, but we just don't know how many projects would be affected by changing that threshold. So that's why staff are are not considering changing that from the seven fifty square foot. And the. In terms of what is counted as modified space, and the way the fire department makes that calculation is that if a wall is. Removed or replaced or um has the framing altered in some way, then both adjacent rooms are counted. If the sheetrock is just removed, um then they only count three feet out from that wall. And that's counted towards the square threshold, that's the square footage threshold. And if it's a a small modification. If the drywall being removed is uh less than twelve square feet, then that's not counted. That's considered a a small modification and they don't count any of the square footage uh towards a threshold. So it it depends on the type of modification, essentially.
And I, I think we do, um, just on that last point, one of the goals here is to not. To make sure that we're being consistent across the way, the methodology in terms of counting that it would be. Sort of a, um, I think, challenging for customers, contractors, residents. If the fire department for fire sprinklers was counting square footage one way and or energy. Thresholds were counted in a totally different way. Um, and so we want to make it consistent, which also. Allows us to be using the same application materials or requiring or requesting from applicants the same application materials. From which we can deduce that information or frankly, ask the applicants to provide their calculation. And we sort of verify that it makes sense. Um, the first uh, um, I think we're this the seven fifty. Um. Uh, number as well, and I think one of the reasons why we think it makes some sense, a part of the reasons why that. we think it makes some sense, a part of the reasons why the, the county model ordinance was developed was to try to create some consistencies in, in the county, um, so that each jurisdiction doesn't really have. You go into Larkspur and it's one thing, you're across the boundary into Cordera, and now you're dealing with a different code. So there is some, I think, value with being consistent with county regulations as all of us do the same thing. It lessens the confusion for contractors and architects and developers trying to, um, navigate, uh, these new requirements. But other than that, yeah, there wasn't really rate justification for, um, I think, that particular number, um, through that process, other than they did vet it through a year-long public process and came up with that number.
So is there more detail than is described here is how this calculation is done? You said like the fire code, for example, if you take drywall off on one side, they count three feet of the next room? Is, that's not in here. So is that, is that referenced somewhere?
That's just how, that's just the fire department's process.
I, I do think, right, actually documenting that, though, as whether it's a policy internally that we sort of develop, and so there is consistency, depending on staff move on, or whatever it is, that we continue to have that consistency would be something to look to do.
Okay. Um, we move to the electric vehicle, EV reach code. Um, I guess I have a question about, um, single, well, first of all, I have questions about, um, the rationale between conduit, well, the definition, I guess, about, uh, what is EV-ready? Um, specifically, uh, because in a home application, it's I think quite different than a commercial, uh, charging station where uh, you now need different kinds of equipment, expensive equipment, you have to tie it into a payment scheme and so forth. Um, so in a single-family home, that, that, could you talk about EV-ready versus actually putting in a socket to plug into?
Yeah, so the definition of, um, EV-ready that's in this code is, is the same as what's in the California minimum state codes. And it, it does actually require a, an outlet, um, at the end of the conduit and wiring that's installed. So theoretically, um, every EV comes with a, a charging cord. You could plug your car into that outlet and charge it. And the distinction between that and what's called a having charging equipment installed, um, is that you would actually have something on the wall that has a, um, that has the cord, that has the plug that you can plug into your car. So rather than bringing your own plug, there's a plug that's installed in your garage. And so that's the distinction.
I'm not following that. Sorry. Um, let, let's stick with single-family homes here. So, um, uh, project operates the main electrical service panel in a single-family home, then you have to do what?
Then you have to have the space in the panel, the forty amp space reserved for the car charger and have the, the conduit with the wiring installed that terminates in a, a receptacle or blank cover is the language that's in the code.
Okay, and, um, that's in the case of of, um, what triggers that? That's triggered by?
By the main electrical service panel being upgraded.
Um, and the rationale for that, um, in other words, I have a gasoline car and I plan on using this car for twenty years. And I have to upgrade my panel for another reason, but now I have to put an EV charger in my garage for, for, not that I'm not going to use for somebody else. Who, when they buy my house, could use that location in the amp and run conduit even outside the house to the garage? I don't quite, I'm sort of a supporter of it, but I don't quite particularly with single-family homes, why we're requiring the conduit in the house?
Right, I think the intent is that panel upgrades are hopefully infrequent. So when you're doing that and making that investment, that you're sort of future-proofing and adding in that space, um, when it's the most cost-effective. Right, a- and that while your, your current vehicle might last you another twenty years, when you go to buy a new car, you won't be able to buy a new gas car. Or, yeah.
Uh, I guess the challenge would be, that could be running that conduit to the garage could be very difficult. Um, is there, I mean, do we, do we have any information about, uh, about, you know, that has to go through the house and you have to tear out your ceiling to get it there? I mean, is there some? Do we know what we're really requiring here in expense?
Yeah, I think there's all, like the other codes, there's a lot of variation there depending on where the panel is in the home and where the charging space would be located.
It's not in that one.
Well, I think, well, we, we can talk about that. I just want to get the information.
I mean, maybe, uh, we do, where do we have the building official hardship exemption?
In the all-electric.
The all-electric. So I mean, i- if that's something like a disproportional cost associated with that piece of it, you know, I think maybe that's an opportunity to sort of think about another hardship exemption or related to disproportional cost of some requirement, uh, associated with upgrading.
Might make sense. So we could now move to multifamily, um, uh, again, this is where, uh, I guess the whole thing of, again, conduit versus actually installing the chargers, uh, and red rental versus condominiums, um, uh, add conduit to at least fifty percent of exposed parking spaces, exposed meaning they're outdoor parking spaces?
So in this case, the, this is for the trigger when the parking lot surface is modified. So the exposed spaces are the ones that have the paving removed.
Okay, so, uh, is there some division of like how much is exposed? I mean, if someone's putting in a handicap ramp and to access a parking space, now they have to put conduit from the main panel in the, in the apartment building out to that parking space and put a charger in?
Yeah, I, I mean, I thought about that one too, or it says some curving, it's, it's, it's left somewhat vague, um. Certainly if you're patching like a little small area of a space. You know, I don't know how frequently that happens, but would that trigger the requirement? I, I think there's some room for some common sense interpretation on some of this stuff. So I, 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 it's a good call out because there, there could be minimal removal of paving. You know, doing some trench work on some small piece of a space, but I don't know if that counts as exposure, you know, exposure.
That's one thing I think to think about. Um, yeah. The other thing that I, I don't, uh, I'm trying to reconcile is the conduit versus actually installing the chargers. If you think about uh, an apartment building, now, now required to run conduit to X number of parking spaces, um, then it doesn't do anybody any good to have conduit in the ground. Um, so they never have to put chargers in, so we haven't really accomplished what we want. Um, and, uh, this, uh, relative to a condominium, uh, if you have, um, if you have assigned spaces that you own, uh, how does the owner decide which of those spaces they're going to bring the charger to? Uh,
Yeah, we, yeah, I think to that question, we did think about that, and I, we are treating condominiums as single-family homes for the purposes of this code. Um, because of that issue, there are assigned spaces. So it's really related to the work being done on that condo unit. Um, they would have to follow the single-family code, uh, renovation code for that EV readiness part of it. You want to address the other, um, one, which was the Yeah, I think the part about actually installing chargers.
Right. Yeah, so for that one, oftentimes with the EV charger installation, the most expensive part is doing the trenching to install the conduit. So that's why that's the, uh, requirement, um, or the, at least the primary requirement, and we are considering for that code um, requiring at least five percent of exposed spaces to have charging stations installed. So there would be a requirement to install um, at least some charging stations, whereas the county's code still gives an option to install only conduit and comply in that way. And then having that additional conduit, uh, while it's not providing charging right now, it does allow for a expansion of charging services as, you know, we are transitioning gradually to a more electric um, vehicle population. Right now, about third of, a third of new cars purchased in Marin are EVs. Um, and that's sort of gradually increasing the percentage of uh, our overall vehicles on the road that are EVs. So it's it's sort of looking at a, a gradual transition. How do we provide some charging now, but then also provide space for additional charging in the future when there's more demand for it?
And I, I do, I do think at some point, as, you know, become sort of, uh, apartment property managers are going to, they're going to need to do this regardless, um, as their tenants. You know, if they want to attract tenants who have electric vehicles, uh, they're going to need to provide some spaces for the charging. So it, you know, this is a push, um, but having the conduit, um, gives them the opportunity to do it in the future as demand, as they, you know, a little bit less of a requirement, um, now versus um, allowing that opportunity to switch in the future. So, um, but yeah, it, it's a good, I mean, there could be adjustments there. Whether five percent's the right number, if you think it's, should be higher, that's something that could be tweaked.
And I think it said, um, you were still looking at the project evaluation amount to install EV chargers? Is that, I think this item two on that page?
Yeah, that's something we're still considering. So if you have any feedback on what that could be.
Uh, um, is, and the last question would be this thirty-six month period, um, un- under the proposed modification or renovation project that meets any of the following conditions over thirty-six month period would require uh, to comply with the town's all-electric ordinance. Can you just explain where that came from and what your thinking is about it?
Yeah, so that's similar to what we have in some other codes, um, looking back thirty-six months and whether there was a permit that was finalized in the thirty-six months um, before a new permit is submitted, and that's to prevent people from potentially breaking up their project into smaller projects to avoid triggering a threshold. So it's a cumulative requirement, our fire sprinkler requirement is the same. It looks back thirty-six months um, to see whether the, uh, projects, when added up, would have met the thirty or the fifty percent threshold.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
For now.
All right, thank you, Dan. Yeah, my God. I'm tempted to defer a lot of this to the comment section, um. Uh, under mandatory measures, uh, you guys have photocell controls listed out as a, a piece of lighting controls. And, um, that's something that homeowners are going to have to do, um, regardless, uh, or is that just under the triggered ordinance?
That's just under the projects that are seven fifty square feet or more.
Um, is, is there some method of, uh, denying, uh, people a gas meter now? If, if there's a new construction or, um, falls into this, that, therefore, then they cannot get a gas meter or gas service to their property? Is that what's going to take place?
But that's what the town has already adopted for new construction. Yes, there's no natural gas infrastructure.
Get a gas meter, period.
Correct.
Okay. Um, no, I think that there's a lot to comment on here. I won't ask questions so much, so, um, yeah. Valerie, you, you have your hand up.
Yes, I just have a follow-up question to Adam about the treating condominiums as, um, single-family units because they have the assigned parking spots. Would we require then the, without the revision for HOA to approve the installation of the EV parking because that will be a big deal for them?
Yes, yeah, I think that's right. We should definitely, typically with all, um, building permits, we would require the HOA approval for, um, for building, or for, maybe it's for, uh, planning entitlements. I'm thinking, I'm getting my, my codes confused, maybe. We do require that, um, but yeah, I, I do think, um, uh, typically that's the case. HOA approval is needed for those, um, projects. Um, but that was why we wanted to make sure that it was treated as single-family. Obviously, any changes to the common area would be problematic in a situation where one condominium owner triggered some common space changes or something like that. So, um, I don't know what we have written in our code right, or in our code right now, but um, I, I, I believe our, when we do intake on a condominium project or multifamily attached building, um, we would seek, I think we, I believe we do request that there is a condominium approval, but I'm not positive.
So if HOA denies the installation of, um, EV chargers, is it something that we can uh, reinforce or incentivize, uh, to reconsider?
Um, you have any ideas? I, I, yeah.
Well, I'll, I'll just add that as, as part of our EV work plan item that's on staff's climate work plan for this year, we are looking at other ways to uh, increase EV charging, not just through building code requirements. And, um, one of those is through education and outreach, uh, specifically to HOA boards, and there are some significant rebates that are available from MCE Clean Energy, our local electricity provider, that would apply to, um, HOAs. So that's, I think it's three thousand per EV charger station that's installed. So that's another method to encourage more EV charging opportunities.
Yeah, I think definitely outreach would be very helpful in education. I also wonder if we can create um, also certain measure for HOA to be proactive and actually offer that first before the tenants actually come to that decision. So that they by default start, um, integrating and allocating the budget for that automatically, or devotes a, a number or percentage of parking spots in the facility for, um, the electrical charging stations. I moved to the comments, I'm so sorry, Peter.
All right, um, I'm just gonna add that. Sorry, um, I'm just gonna add that this is this, uh, condominium thing is a sticky wicket at best. Um, wherever the meter is, wherever the parking is, wherever the resident is. It's going to be difficult to divide this up into regulations that make any sense.
Yeah, and I think that's why it's it is important. To have these discussions and anytime we discuss with homeowners. Potential, um. Construction projects on their condominium as part of an HOA, really that should in concept go to the HOA first with all the requirements. Um, and so they'll know whether or not they can do the project or not from the board perspective before they even come to the town for a building permit.
Okay. Um. The only other thing that I think was going to end up in my comment section was that, uh, a home, let's take it for instance, a home has electric, uh, gas service. And, um, at some point down the road, they want to add a gas generator. And I'm reading that that is, uh. Exempt. Under even under the 50%.
So it's only permitted for, um, backing up essential services. So a single family home would not be allowed to install a gas generator.
Um, don't understand why not, um, you know, if you want to have a generator that provides power to your refrigeration and so forth. Um, is that not an essential service or?
Um, so in that in that sense, the code is thinking of essential services like a a police or fire station or a hospital.
Okay. Essential services building. Okay, but. Um, all right, I'll I'll comment on that. All right, so. There's a lot, still a lot to chew on here, but let's dive into this, um, in the same order we went before with, um. Commentary and we'll try to get this into the categories that. Um, staff can chew on, um, what we, yeah. Got to check for public comment. Yes, so.
Thank you.
Um, sorry, we'll open this up and, um. I don't think there's anybody in the room that wants to, uh, make a public comment on this issue, um, but, um. I see. Who do you have online?
Uh, sure, there was one person with their hand raised earlier. Is it now? Maybe the comment is left. See it being raised.
Okay. So none. Okay. Then we'll close that public comment section and we'll move into commissioner comment. So, um, Valerie, have at it, uh, with what you've got, I'm sure is a laundry list.
Oh, not not at all. Um, I don't have many comments. I, uh, I would like to see though the. The write up and breakdown on how we would treat the commercial properties. I believe that. Uh, when we do compare the carbon footprint, um, those take the most of, uh, what carbon carbon data produces from the, uh, uh, building standpoint of view. Uh, not as much residential units, especially because the single family residences are slowly are upgrading to the electrical. Um, appliances. So I'm just concerned that we haven't looked at it and I understand the matter is very complicated, but, um, it does need to be addressed. So, uh, we would love to see, um. That addressed as well and the same detail as the single, uh, residential family homes. And, um, another comment is for again, probably in the same matter is to, uh, closely cover the multifamily. Uh, units on how these, uh, reach codes and also energy codes need to be addressed, uh, within those and more clarification and. More matrices on how to measure, uh, what triggers the upgrade. For those.
Okay, um. At the extent of what you want to input here on this.
For now. I need to chew on it a little bit.
Make an asterisk here.
Uh, Valerie, just for clarification, the when you say, um, I think you were saying matrix matrices for. Um, the triggers, what how multifamily. Um. I'm gonna call.
Right, what what would trigger the, um, need for the, uh, uh, upgrade in the multifamily homes? And so we kind of ran through the single family homes. Um, but also it would be great to create kind of same. Datum for the multifamily homes and understand, uh, the requirements for those, whether it's the. Obviously, like if it's rented, the landlord would be responsible, uh, to upgrade the entire building. But if it's our condominium or, you know, townhouses, what would, uh, that look like?
Okay, the the condos and the townhouses would follow the single family threshold. So I, but I I hear you in the multifamily. We haven't. We don't have sort of a, um. Well, there the 50% I think would apply to, you know, so the 50% for that would require all of essentially if you demolished all the. Walls of the. Multifamily apartment building, you would be required to, um. Make it an all electric multifamily building. So the 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 one that doesn't. Um, apply to multifamily would be the 750 square foot threshold. I'm looking at if you would just make sure it makes sense, um. We haven't created a different threshold for sort of the renovation of apartments. Um, or multifamily apartment building, uh, at this point. So I think that's the part I'm hearing is what you'd like to see developed.
Yes, I I think. Applying the rule of 50% is challenging in multifamily homes, just because. If you are renovating 50% of the walls within the multifamily building, the 50% I assume would be from the entirely of the building itself. Correct? And if that might be, uh. Very rare when that happens, um, and therefore it will leave out. Uh, these buildings as never retrofitted, never upgraded. So if we want to again incentivize these buildings to be upgraded. Perhaps there is a rule of maybe X amount of units that could be that. Are required to be upgraded so that it triggers the entire building upgrade. Um, or something along those lines.
Okay, thank you.
I think the troll of 50% is not enough for the building to be there.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Valerie. Uh, Mr. Rizzo.
Yeah, uh, before we dive into the the single family, um. Uh, things that, you know, Valerie brought up a great point about some of the larger commercial projects, um. That with the code really doesn't address some of the the heating and the heating and cooling and and the water heating elements that. That really are the big energy suckers. Um. And I know when when I do a project and and retail work, a lot of times they just, you know, they're doing. A million dollars worth of work and they keep the old mechanical units that's less than 10 years old. And we know we've got great new energy efficient units and. Um, I encourage staff to maybe look into. You know how we might apply that to some of these tenant improvements to. You know, uh, try to get some of these measures in there for some of those really high use. Um. You know, high use appliances. Um, I understand that the the. Restaurants are restaurants with the gas and and we want to allow them to continue using gas if. If that's what they want and they need, but definitely some of the, I I mean, I know hot water and and heating and cooling is definitely definitely huge, huge energy suckers. So, um. Multifamily and. And multi tenant, I think, uh, the parking is going to be a bit challenging, um. It'd be great to see see some of that happen. Uh, I wish I had a solution or some sort of, uh, direction from another city that hasn't done this before. Uh, we may want to wait and and see what how other cities evolve, uh, maybe to to actually bring us to a. Uh, an ordinance, um, until we can define it a little bit further. Um, because I definitely think that there's some sticky stickiness with the scope triggers, um, and we don't want to discourage people from. Um, you know, putting accessible parking spaces in or fixing a curb or fixing potholes in their in their parking lot if they don't have the money to. To upgrade some of the, um, the EV charging. So I know it's a bit of concern, um. On, uh. On the commercial owner ownerships not doing work and 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 encouraging keeping their properties up. Because we're putting them at a hardship. Um. So the the design professional in me is very happy and I'm cheering. And then the development project management side of me with the budgets. Get a little scared, um, when I see the culmination of some of the things that are getting hit with the 50% rule. Um, and I'm I I. I do, I did a list of some of the things that I think that would are going to create as could be an exit, uh. Could be deal breakers. On people doing projects that are larger than 50%. We're already pretty much requiring sewer laterals. If if your sewer laterals busted. Fire sprinklers, woo wee upgrades, raising houses. Out of the floodplain and now the electrification, um, although that individually each one of these things might not be a lot, um. You know, you could be up in the up in the hundred thousand dollar range in some of these things, um. And in some cases, if you have to upgrade the 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 transformer for your remote part of, um. Of quarter of era, it could get increased even further. So I just want to be very sensitive about that. I know that we're trying to align the codes and I and I get what Adam is saying that, um. It's hard to plan, check these and to come up with. Uh, a solution that that blankets everything. Um, but I definitely want to encourage staff to look at all those all those expenses as they're triggered at 50% because if we really want. To improve our housing stock as our general plan and objectives are, um, we want to make sure that people can do it. And they're not. Doing things, um, without permits because they don't want to hit that 50% threshold before they remodel their houses. We want families to stay here. Um, I do feel that. A lot of people remodel their houses when they when they have young kids and that's, uh, the time when you don't have a lot of money. You know, you need the space, um, so. Um, but I'm very happy that we're we're taking a step, um. To. Bring more electricity in into the homes and to electrify a lot of the appliances. Um, two of the appliances that, uh, concern me a little bit, like I I mentioned a little bit earlier, um, and we might want to. I don't know if we got another community outreach out before we bring this to town council. But, um, I think if a lot of people knew that they weren't going to have fireplaces and they weren't going to have. Be able to cook on a cooktop at least, they might, they might think a little bit differently. Um. About supporting this in entirety, um. I think if you take the cooktop and the fireplaces out, all the other, um, all the other appliances, it's a no brainer. It they're really easy to. To accommodate, uh, those luxuries that people want and and also get a lot and a more energy efficient product. Um. I think, uh, there was something, um, in the. In. The draft that says that that gives discretion to the building inspectors and building, uh, the officials about some of the. Parameters around the exemptions, um, to get to 50%. And I think that it might be advantageous to. To have a few parameters around that, um, so it's not so discretionary because it. Like, as I said, you hit that 50%, there's a ton of money. It it could, it could really, really blow someone's budget. So. Um, and if we we. We get, um, a a more conservative building official. And as we're, uh, and some of the younger building officials are definitely more conservative with with those things, then you're going to find that a lot of people. Might not be able to afford their projects. So, um, I just want to make sure that we give the tools to our plan checkers. To. To draw to draw the line. So we know where the line is as designers and as homeowners, um. Let's see. Yes, so I I think I've already spoke about the about some of the minor the minor remodels and and and, um, just try to define the scope. A little bit better on some of the commercial stuff. I think it needs a little more work just to get it to a point where. Where people are really comfortable with doing improvements to their properties, um. So those are those are just my concerns and and some of the things I think staff might want to consider working on a little bit. Um, with, uh, and with the the parking space realignment, um, in retail, which could be definitely another sticky subject when you've got a multi tenant project. Um. And we're trying to get some. Um. Some electric out to the the parking lot, you know, it affects all the tenants. So, um. I guess, I, you know, I don't know, other than study how other other jurisdictions have have accommodated this or if there's anything out there yet, but I think that that. That might be one we either do a little more research on, uh, before we. We've kind of approached town council with it because I think it's a definitely. A very difficult. Uh, way to divide up a a parking lot. Um, and and who's going to pay for it? And one of the big things in commercial is not just the digging, but it it's the upgrade of the transformer. I've done several of these big commercial. Uh, uh, charging stations and and most of the expenses actually, the expense and the time commitment is to try to get PG out there. To do a service upgrade to allow, especially if the town center has to do an upgrade for that whole thing, they're going to need a whole new transformer and all sorts of power. Um, so. Um, these are just things that bring up as concerns that that could happen, um. And for staff to look into. So those are my comments. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Jim. All right, uh, I'm going to move over to you, Margaret, then for your commentary.
Wow, I don't want to make this any longer than it needs to be. Uh, first of all, just looking at the big picture, I think this is really, um. Really not ready to be seriously considered. You have, you're facing a lawsuit. Which, uh, the the wheels of justice turn very slowly. And, um. There are also a lot of unanswered questions just in the single resident part that that we brought up here. Um, little questions and bigger questions. Um, one of them that I think is everyone going to just go out and get a propane tank now and put it behind their house if they want gas? What is the fire department going to think of that? And we've just spent a lot of time talking about many, many hours. Talking about the housing element. How is this discouraging people from coming in and building? We need new houses and then the bigger thing, bigger question is, I think. What we're talking about here. Places an inordinate. Uh, burden on a single family home homeowner. It for renovating their house for, um. Electrifying their house. I just think about what I would have to do. If I had to upgrade my electric panel, I'd have to dig up my entire, the width of my entire house to get. Any kind of conduit over to the garage where I need it. I would never upgrade my electric panel. It whether I needed it or not, whether it became a fire hazard or not, because who could afford to trench through my entire property? Um. I I think that we really need to look and spend a lot more time looking at the commercial properties. That, uh, do make a bigger impact. Um. And, uh, and at least make the burden of carrying, um, carrying us into the future. Of electrific, electric, whatever the word is. Putting electric everywhere, making it a little more even so that the burden isn't falling on, um. Single families. Um. That's my comment.
Very good. Thank you, Margaret. I appreciate that, um. Alan, fine.
Yeah, I suppose I'm next.
Thanks, you are, sir.
Uh, well, first of all, you know, I certainly do support. Uh, the reach code, uh, EV. Uh, in general, uh, and, uh, renovation, uh, I think as I. My Q and A might indicate, I think there's areas where more specificity would be helpful, um. And, uh. And, uh. Wonder again, because I I have some problem with, uh. The definition of, as you can tell, the walls and so forth. The definition of, as you can tell, the walls and so forth. I don't know if we looked at a value. You know, doing it by value rather than a percentage of area because it's. Someone may be tearing down an area that doesn't help them meet the code. For example, it's taking off the roof. Well, it may or may not. You know, if it's fifty percent, it may not. Help you in terms of what you're trying to accomplish, so. And and I think I think a good point made by the other commissioners about. How we address. Commercial property, which. Has already been brought up and I will repeat it. On the EV question, I wonder if it would be useful. To separate under the multifamily hotels, motels, non residential. To separate residential from other commercial. Because. I think there's a difference in terms of the users. In other words, a residential property doesn't have to have. A charger like a Tesla, expensive Tesla charger. All it has to have is a stand and an outlet. That's tied back digitally to how they get charged. Because you know who your tenants are, who your condo owners are. So I don't support on the residential. Just putting in conduit. I think if we have thirty percent EVs. You know, people in apartments and condos ought to be able to charge their vehicle. At their residence. And I don't think there's a real premium. In actually just adding the pole with the outlet and the technology to that. And then the commercial properties I feel differently about because those do involve usually, you know, franchises with. Multiple providers of EV who are also bearing the cost. And so their conduit, just putting in the conduit might make sense. And then you have the opportunity to negotiate with a provider. I wish there's a number of them out there. I think that's it. So I guess I agree with Margaret. I think we're not. Really ready for this to become code.
Thank you, Daniel. I haven't taken this many notes. In a long time. So, under number, you got those four. Elements. I forget which chart they are, but I made note of them. And the fourth one had to do with expansion of gas in existing residential residences, right? One, two, and three were fair, but expansion of gas in existing residents is not. I have a problem with that, so and that has to do with. Couple issues. One is that if a home wants to add a generator. Because and it's a gas generator, that wouldn't be allowed if you're. Doing this. And this goes back to the bigger issue that you briefly brought up, which is MCE and they're. Approaching. With electrical fulfillment. That's all fine and well, but the real issue, I think, is how do we ensure the electrical supply? Nobody's talked about this. When our neighborhood goes without power for three or four days. Everybody's saying, I can't do anything. I've lost all my power. And they're out there. And nobody can address it. So it's reliability with PG and E and MCE. And that's a problem. There has to be some effort by the town on a policy basis back toward these agencies saying. You need to do better. You need to do something. I don't know what that might constitute for the town to generate that type of approach or attitude, but. Everybody's just sailing along, saying PG and E and MC are fine. What are we going to do about them? We're not going to do anything. They're just going to still have their hiccups. And the problems and everybody's without power for days and loses hundreds if not thousands of dollars and food and all that. It's a problem. People want a generator. They should be able to add a generator. Gas generator to their home. Keep power going. I think that's something that's important. This is a huge cost item for people, all of this stuff. Who's going to help these homeowners figure this stuff out? You've got these charts. That we might be able to understand, but when you've got. Significant part of this local population that is over sixty. Right? And they're supposed to afford the consultants or whoever it is to come in and figure out all these compliance. Impacts. It's not easy for a lot of these people. You guys have seen them walk in the door and. They're going, how do I figure this out? They need help. This is not there. There needs to be some way of resolving. These for people who walk in the door and say, I want to add a room onto the house. Now they got to hire. Someone to calculate all this stuff, go through all this stuff. Make they got to hire an engineer for an electrical upgrade or. There's all kinds of stuff that has to happen. It's cost, it's money. It's going to drive up the cost of residences in the town. It's going to happen and it's unfortunate. I think the assistance programs need to be up somehow. I think that the town might figure out a way to provide some credits on. Building permits. Fees for doing these upgrades. You know, you you did estimate what a service upgrade costs. I've just gone through this with some people and. Fifteen to twenty thousand dollars is an. Average for these. They can be a lot more money within a service. If you've got to go. Overhead, new overhead drop PG and E to the house, panel conduit into the house. It's a lot of money. They're hitting, I would suggest finding more sources that the public can tap into and create. Funnel for those people to find those resources. It's really important. It's a huge cost to and a burden, as other commissioners have pointed out, putting on homeowners to do this. It's really. A lot. The. Standards for these thresholds that are between. Fire and building have to be resolved. I hear the other commissioners talking about this, right? So you got fire calculations and you've got building department calculations for what triggers this? Fifty percent rule, right? They each have different. Am I right in that?
We're using the same. We're using different units of measurements to calculate different things. So the so floor area, we're using. The same methodology as the fire department when we're when we're talking about the seven hundred and fifty square foot threshold. We're using a different methodology entirely that the fire department doesn't use. For. When to consider something a new structure. Which is fifty percent. So that's, yeah, so we, I mean, as far as. What they do, we are going to be consistent with one portion of this ordinance.
One, okay, so guy walks in the door. He's going to need an architect to figure it out for him, or you guys are going to have to do it. Who's going to? Figure this all out. It's not easy for someone. I just referred enough guys come in and they want. Help. Yeah, I I made a note here. The rebates are a drop in the bucket of the cost. So you made a list of what those available resources are. Or people. Nothing compared to what it costs. They need more resources. Everybody has commented on the multifamily regulations. Valerie said make a chart. You guys need to figure out a way to define these. Circumstances around multifamily. Parking, all that stuff. It's clearly. Even from other communities needing more definition, right? I've heard everybody comment on that. Thinking about commercial institutions. Everybody's brought that up. I think that's a consistent element. You think about what powers the mall and they've got air conditioning running. All these but heat running. It's a huge consumer of power and somehow it has to be tightened down. In all kinds of ways, whether it's gas for those things or figuring out how to get to really. Efficient electrical equipment, but that's the nature of the beast. Big commercial building chews up a lot of power. It's unfortunate, but that's what it is. I think that you've heard a lot of the same comments from the commissioners. It's consistent and I would agree with. Margaret and Daniel that it's not quite ready to push over to council. It needs more definition. Any questions? Any other commissioner added commentary? Valerie, Jim?
I would just say. On implementation, obviously. Phoebe touched on the fact that we are. Obviously going to follow the guidance of our attorneys on. When this would be ready to go before the town council with respect to the existing lawsuit, so we need more clarity there. That's that's given. Certainly wanted to. Not lose our momentum with the outreach and the effort of getting comments and trying to fine tune the. Ordinance to a point where it was ready to go before the. The council. And. I think. What was the other? I was going to make anyways. This is useful feedback, so I thank you all for your time and energy and effort to. Sort of. Comb through, it's a this complicated and voluminous amount of text and information. You know, I was going to say, you know, one of the things that we do have to consider. And this is the challenge with these sorts of things and why the county did it when they did it. And, you know, we were actually pretty close. I think it was the council was. Several, a couple council members at the time we went in December were close. Were supportive of the counties, you know, adopting the county's ordinance. We wanted to, you know, and ultimately, though, it was decided more outreach was needed to our own. Community, the feedback we've gotten and and other, the commission and the climate action committee, if we. Go too far down the road, let's say we're sometime in this time next year. We're at the next code cycle essentially, so we might as well abandon the project. So you kind of need to decide whether you're. And council will ultimately decide whether it's time to. Move forward with something or, you know, wait essentially to the next code cycle, what there's going to be, again, the codes every year are going to get more. More stringent on energy efficiency anyway, so some of this stuff is really trying to anticipate what's coming. And work within. What other jurisdictions have already addressed and worked on and. Adopted, so. Thank you for all.
I didn't say, as the other commissioners had, it's a good report, Phoebe. Thank you for all this effort and. Hard not to untie. So, thank you, right? Okay.
I just had one last thing, Peter, if I may. I think. One of the things that that dawned on me is I know that we've got this hard line at fifty percent, but I really like how the energy code kind of gives you a menu. And 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 we could develop something with with tiers at fifty percent, sixty, seventy percent or whatever, but a lot of this stuff's going to be remodeled when you go to fifty percent anyway, and you would get credits for it. Typically doing a new water heater. New appliances and a lot of new things as you develop a fifty percent remodel. And as you get a little bit higher up into that remodel percentage, you're you're most likely going to go ahead and hit all those. Those those menu items, but it. You know, I like the way the energy code is set up because it gives a little bit of flexibility to the homeowner. To choose what they're ready to upgrade. So anyway, I don't know.
Yeah, good point.
Something like that has ever been done.
All right. So thank you. We'll close this item then. Everybody ready to move on? All right. Gentlemen, you're here for the next item, but I'm just going to check to see if we need to take a break for a few minutes.
I need to stand up.
Okay. All right.
Good idea. My knees just creaked.
Okay. And I, the second item on the agenda is seven hundred Tamil Pious Drive, a preliminary review of an application to remodel the existing gasoline service station at seven hundred Tamil Pious Drive. Tracy, you have repaired, prepared a report.
I don't want to go too fast, but I wanted to be. Reach my project, so if I'm going too fast. Let me know. And so as you know, we're talking about a preliminary review of the remodel. The gas station at.
Seven hundred Tamil Pious Drive. Thank you, commissioners, for your time tonight. The preliminary review is utilized to provide the applicant with early feedback while they're finalizing their project for a formal hearing. The commission is not going to be taking any action tonight. The applicant will explain their project. To the commission will be available to answer any questions that you have or that members of the public have tonight. The project site is seven hundred Tamil Pious Drive in the red square. Situated at the northeast corner of the intersection of Madera Boulevard and Tamil Pious Drive. The site is about fifteen thousand square feet in area or about a third of an acre. And is developed with a fifteen hundred square foot gasoline service station building that contains a four hundred and thirty six square foot mini mart and. Approximately eleven hundred square foot service base and small check area. To the south of the service station building is a twenty five foot by forty five foot canopy covering the eight fuel pump positions. Vehicular access is provided via two driveways. On the south property boundary from Tamil Pious Drive and there are an additional two driveways on the west property boundary from Madera Boulevard. Adjacent to and behind the site is the Cordera Town Center Mall, that's zone C two. Regional shopping. Across the street is a standalone office building that's zone O, professional administrative office. And to the south across Tamil Pious Drive are an array of commercial establishments. Those are all zone C one. Local shopping. And based upon the information supplied by the applicant to date. Ultimately, the following actions would be brought with a formal hearing on this item. At a later date, design review, assigned permit, variance approval due to some changes to the pump island canopy that's in a required setback. And a conditional use permit to accommodate the building's full uses of mini mart. So modification of the. Uses within the building to allow it to comprise solely of the mini mart with with minus the service station minus small check. Additionally, a use permit is required for any business in Cordera that wants to operate between the hours of eleven PM and six AM. They're proposing twenty four hours a day, seven days a week operation for the mini mart. Design review basically includes the exterior changes to the site and I'll go through these briefly on the upcoming slides. The applicant proposes to. Make exterior changes to the building to address really deferred maintenance and update the aesthetic. Of the exterior facade, so changes to all four sides of the service station building. The service bay roll ups are on the north elevation, which shown here is the south facing Tamil Pious Drive. Service bay roll ups would be removed and the storefront system at the west and south would be replaced. And you can also see some utilization of new materials and colors. There's no increase to the size or height. Of the existing building. The only increase in floor area with this project is a result of a new trash enclosure. That's replacing an existing chain link. Trash enclosure. That new trash enclosure is roofed and enclosed, so new floor area. That's about one percent new floor area. The canopy for the covering the fuel pumps is also proposed to be modified. The existing roof is pitched and you can see its outline here on the proposed south. On the right, the applicant proposes to attach new white bullnose panels to the. Edge of the canopy roof to give it a flat look, commonly seen on other Chevron branded stations. These eight fuel pump positions will remain and they'll be rebranded with Chevron signage. The applicant has provided a preliminary landscape plan to rehabilitate landscape areas. Now, the applicant has provided a preliminary landscape plan to rehabilitate landscape areas of the site. Those areas are shown with the green outline on this slide. The applicant will re-landscape the existing large planter here at the middle of the western boundary as well as the existing planter area at the corner of the intersection. New landscape people would be installed at the north project boundary and at the southeast corner down here as well. One new Chinese pistache tree would be added here at the large planter between the two driveways at the western project boundary. And then there are two street trees. I think it's two street trees in poor condition along the south project boundary that would are proposed to be replaced with white crepe myrtles. There are 15 parking spaces provided on the site that's not proposed to change. That includes the pump island parking spaces required is 11. They're they're providing 15. A sign permit is proposed. There's information on this sign program in your packet. And given the lateness that the sign program was received by staff, we're still evaluating it for compliance with chapter 1822 signs. But the applicant would benefit from planning commission feedback at this time on the design, the location, the height and the illumination of any proposed signs. This is showing their proposed to sign program at this time. One building sign is proposed. That's shown on this elevation here facing south. It's about 23 square feet. This is the believe this is the only sign that is not illuminated. And the proposed canopy sign program includes one Chevron logo mark on the south elevation. And then duplicate two identical Chevron word marks on the west and east elevation. And again, the the gas pumps will be rebranded with signage as well. The applicant also proposes a new freestanding sign. The proposed sign would be located in the same corner of the site that the existing 76 pylon sign near the intersection of Tamil Pious and Madera Boulevard. The proposed freestanding sign is 14 feet, eight inches roughly where a maximum of 15 feet is allowed. And included on this site, just for the commission's information for comparison is there's an existing Chevron, as you probably know, at 90 quarter Madera Town Center. So on the north side of the town center mall. And this shows their monument pricing sign, which is approximately five feet by six by six feet. Size illuminated also. There would be a variance request most likely with this supplication. As I stated previously, they're proposed to modify the fuel island canopy. And as a pitched roof shown in the dash line and with the wrapping of the edge of the roof to create this flat look. The height of the roof would increase by about three and a half feet at the eaves and about six inches at the ridge. And so with an increase in height of the canopy in a required setback, that would that would require variance approval. This slide shows a blue dash line for required setbacks for the site and the existing canopy location. The footprint wouldn't change. It's just the height and with the vertical change within a setback requires the the variance and the applicant would benefit from the commission's view of that variance request. Lastly, as described in the staff report, the existing service station was lawfully established just over 70 years ago. When a gas station was a permitted use in commercial zones. So that the use of the site as a gas station isn't a part of the review. The application does include a conditional use permit though, to modify the uses at the interior of the store. There's 11 1100 square feet of vehicle service and smog check areas that would be converted to conditioned space and combined with the existing office restroom and mini mart. That's about 436 square feet to convert the entire building to mini mart use. Also, part of the conditional use permit would be extending the hours of the mini mart to 24 hours a day, seven days a week. The existing mini marts open from 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM, seven days a week. This is just a look at the existing and proposed floor plan showing the change to the interior of the service station building. And the applicant would benefit on the commission's view of the proposed use, including those hours of operation. Just for a little bit more information on other businesses' hours, the existing Chevron mini mart at 90 Madera Boulevard is open 24 hours a day, seven days a week. The only other gas station in quarter Madera is at 516 Tamil Pious Drive, a quick serve gas station. Its mini mart is open 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM, Monday through Friday. 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM on Saturdays and it's closed on Sundays. Their pumps are the same as the existing 76 service station where they're self-service and you could get your gasoline or self-serve yourself gasoline 24 hours a day, seven days a week. No matter if there's no employees on site. That's all I have. The applicant's design team and the property owner here to answer any questions you have and explain their project to you as well. Please let me know if you have any questions for me.
All right. Yeah, that's where we'll start. Thank you. Even though this is not a regular hearing, I'm going to ask commissioners for their questions for you. So I'll start with you, Daniel. Do you have any questions for Tracy?
Not at this time. I want to hear from her proponent.
Okay. Margaret.
Is the pole sign going to be replaced with the monument sign? Or is the pole sign going to be retained with a different logo on it?
They're proposing to remove the the pole sign with the 76 ball on it. And it will be replaced with the proposed 14 foot, eight inch freestanding sign. That's what's the monument sign, the lower one is an example from the other Chevron in quarter Madera at 90 quarter Madera Town Center.
So that's not going to be what's there.
That's not what the applicant's proposing. And I provided that example to you just as
So where is the picture of what Oh, thank you, Peter.
I I got it.
Got it. Okay.
I don't have any other questions.
Okay. Valerie, any questions for Tracy?
Not for Tracy now. Thank you.
Right. And Mr. Riddle.
I've got a few questions. One. The conditional, the use today, we're not talking about the use because it's a grandfather didn't use, but as a use in a C2 regional shop shopping center, do we have that in our code as a use for a gas station or is is this something?
A service station with the mini mart is a conditional use in the C2 zone.
If it was just a gas station, is it still a conditional use?
Yes, I think we would say if you're building a new gas station, whether or not it has the mini mart, we would look at our code and make sure. What aspects does it have? Does it have automobile repair? Is that a permitted zone? Is the combination of uses really that we'd be looking at for a new gas station? But yes, a guest, if it was just a gas station, it would need a use permit in the zone. However, this particular gas station was established lawfully when it was a permitted use in all our commercial districts. So they've been they've been operating as a gas station for since then.
And and are there any conditions of approval that were done over the last 70 years for this piece of property that we need to be aware of?
There was a conditional use permit to establish the existing small mini mart. That was approximately the data is in the staff report when 1999, the planning commission approved a design review and use permit to add a small mini mart and retain the service base. And a building permit was subsequently applied for, but the building permit and the entitlements expired in 2001. So we're doing rather than modifying that existing use permit from 2001, it's expired. So we're doing brand new brand new conditions of approval. The commission sees fit.
Okay. And has Public Works reviewed the monument sign? And will it be part of the approval? Because it it does look like it might limit visibility into the side into the crosswalk. And I don't know if that's solely on the planning commission to review or is a public works issue as well?
Oh, that's definitely something we would want to have public works look at and make ensure that the sign doesn't inhibit or obstruct vehicle or pedestrian line of sight at that intersection and make sure that public works gets the additional information that they need or can make recommendations related to that sign. They haven't had a chance to do that yet, just given the lateness that the signs were received by staff. But yes, absolutely. They would provide comment on that that part. And request whatever information they need from the applicant to show maybe that it isn't versus the town spending resources to to analyze that. Who would ask their traffic engineer to look at that?
Is the other Chevron the only 24/7 business that we have in quarter Madera that we've allowed for the signage and for the lighting to be on after 11?
To my knowledge, it's only 24/7. I could look at additional businesses more closely. I do have a slide showing that I can pull up for you. That's the hours that I've looked at. We got some help from the town center to find out the hours of some of their late night markets like Safeway and Rite Aid. Let me show you that real quick here. So it's in in no particular order, but with the two gas stations at the top. These are just some of the ones that are the latest that I could find. There's probably more early morning. I would expect if I started looking at on quarter Madera, old quarter Madera Square and at some of the workout locations potentially, I would not be surprised to find some that were before six and like permits required for hours that extend either beyond 11 or prior to six. Some of those may have a use permit for that and some some may not and aren't aware that they need one. But if this, if you're interested in sort of some more areas of town, I can I can look at.
This is fine. My last question would be on the signage and this may be what you're kind of reviewing with the whole staff. The the huge band that's going around the canopy, it's pretty tall. It's four foot tall. How do you calculate the signage of that? And are you just calculating the the individual branding signs? Because the whole thing is kind of branded as a sign. It's a big blue.
Yeah, I think we would look at is the entire band illuminated, especially from behind versus just lights it cast down from the inside of the canopy. Talking about is the whole band illuminated?
Was the whole band considered signage or is it just the individual pieces is what I'm getting?
Yeah, I started looking at that. I looked at the previous Chevron redevelopment at 90 corner Madera Town Center. And there was a lot of discussion on signage and whether or not to include that backer panel. So like I think I could provide a summary of what staff is interpreting includes signs and what doesn't for the commissions to opine on at a formal hearing. I I think at first glance, the sign would be the content, the wording, and then the rest would be their colors similar to paint on a on a building. But if it's illuminated, maybe that would change. And then based on our past practice with this gas station wraps on the canopy, how we treated those. Better answer than that, but I'd want to maybe get some guidance from what our practice has been in the recent past with some of the signage. And I think that the other Chevron is over signage for some reason that was that was approved. So I think I think I can look into that in greater detail for you, Jim.
Yeah, I got two more questions and I'll hand over to another commissioner. The since it they're considering applying for 24/7, are there some dark sky type of applications that we need to be aware of? Considering it's across the street. It's not directly across the street, but there is a residential neighborhood just past the compass building that would be lit up all night. So is there some sort of parameters we put around the lighting after a certain time and it's kind of a unique I think request because of its location?
We do have some commercial lighting conditions of approval that that may or may not address some of that. And it it certainly would be within the commission's purview to add some conditions on dimming of those lights or some are some are on and some are off. Or the minimum necessary for security only, for instance, after certain hours of the night. And that's something that, you know, I I could come up with a recommendation based on using our conditions of approval and maybe what might be in place at anywhere else that has these extended hours. Like so there's some businesses that are open until 11:00 PM midnight. And so what could that framework look like for the commission's review at a hearing and consideration in terms of what is the appropriate condition of approval to add related to all that lighting?
And I think my last question would just be on the colors and it might be an applicant question. I was wondering if it was going to be a similar building color scheme to the other pieces of branding. It seems like that's what they're going for, but I just wanted to confirm because it's a lot easier to see on the existing building.
Well, you're talking about whether or not they're going to paint.
Well, it says the paint. I'm just saying the paint color. We don't have any paint chips. I was just trying to give them feedback on the color of the building because it looks like it's a kind of earth toned color scheme. Is it similar to what they what the Chevron is? I don't know if that's the same owner or not. Is it the similar color scheme to the mini market over there?
I'll let them speak to that. Yeah, it's a franchisee type of arrangement. They'll they'll correct me if I'm wrong about that.
Peter, are we are we supposed to ask questions of the applicant at this point in this format or do you want to wait?
We'll wait after their presentation.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Daniel, you have.
A question about site lighting. Have they proposed site lighting and what what restrictions or requirements do we have about site lighting?
Are you talking about within the landscaping or just generally for the building and
The area itself, like pole lights. So, you know, lighting up the area. Parking areas and so forth.
Okay, I'm looking at. So there's a requirement that exterior lighting fixtures comply with the Green Building Standards Code, which is probably more complicated than I can understand, but something that would we would use the building department to help plan check. I can provide you more information about that. Exterior lighting requirements in terms of color temperature. The fact that they should be controlled by dimmers and timers. And then obviously that the exterior lights would need to be turned off at the close of business. And in this case, maybe that's something that we condition as to what lights are permitted to be on if they are open 24/7. And then that motion activated lights can be utilized without time restriction.
But at this point, we don't know what they're proposing.
And there is some information about which signs are illuminated and which aren't. And then I'm sure they would have down lighting at the new canopy. There's a strip of lighting, I believe, at the top of the canopy or some it's like an under an under lighting and I don't let the applicant speak to.
We can ask the applicant about pole lighting and that kind of thing. Right? Okay. All right. So that's what we're going to do. Gentlemen, we're going to ask that you get to come up and make your presentation to us. So please identify yourselves and we can find out all about you.
Switch right on top. It'll turn green when it's on. And then if you want me to bring up any of these drawings for you.
Okay. Good evening. My name's Julio Teneharo from Milestone Associates with a design firm for the project. I wanted to, yeah, just present a little bit and then answer some questions. We definitely appreciate you guys considering it and at least for your input. I know you guys can't make any form of decision. But we are definitely interested in hearing from you. The project, as you know, you heard earlier, was built 70 years ago, the building itself. So the owner and the applicant is trying to, we're doing a facade renovation. So the building, as you probably were, it's an a metal building that is trying to um, we're doing a facade renovation. So the building, as you probably were, it's an a metal building that is um it's still in good stable condition, but we wanted to update the facade renovation. So what we're proposing are some of the finishes and the colors that we're proposing is to not necessarily be uh Chevron brand because Chevron has a lot of the blues and the whites. But um we wanted to kind of match the area around it. So if you look around some of the buildings, the color schemes, the materials, we went in and tried to incorporate something. So we wanted to stick out like a sore thumb, but we wanted to incorporate it with the um adjacent properties and communities. Some of the materials that are proposed are um if it's a fiberboard type material. So it's very sturdy, but it's easy to attach to existing metal buildings. So these metal buildings we've done converted these many times. And we kind of come, we resolved the problem of trying to um provide these facade renovations. So what we do, we found that works really well is um different types of fiberboard materials that give you different exterior textures. Some are could be a culture stone, a stucco finish. It could be a brick finish. So we kind of look at the adjacent areas and see how we could make this building look like it's basically a new building. But we're attaching the finishes to the existing structure because the structures are not designed to carry a lot of additional load. So structurally, we have to design a uh wall assembly that will work with those kind of buildings. So we've had this experience on other locations and other jurisdictions when we do convert these buildings. And the end result is that it looks like a brand new either stucco or, you know, um brick finish. It looks really nice. A lot of the um if you're familiar with a lot of the fast food chains, they use a lot of this material now. It's a very cost effective and it has very longevity. It keeps the design or the look, the intended look uh for longevity. It works really well with weather. And so those were proposing there. So the main thing is we're trying to do a facade renovation of the existing building and to bring it up to um just an updated look. Um, as far as the canopy, the canopy basically is the the brand. That's going to be the Chevron with the Chevron logos and the signage that's on the canopy. There is one sign you saw in the elevation on the building, which is uh kind of telling them that the convenience store is there. But that's not going to be the building itself is not going to be a color scheme that's going to be similar to a brand. So there's going to be a unique um elevation for this location that again is supposed to tie into the community. So we haven't done this color scheme or this layout. Not a prototype design, in other words. So the canopy is the canopy, as you know, their their branding, their colors and their signage. So we kind of go with that. We have to go with that. But um as far as the building itself, it's um kind of up to the owner and the community. Um. Some of the questions about site lighting that was brought up, uh, we're not proposing to change the site. In other words, the site lighting that exists, we are going to bring it up to code because we are required by the building code to they were brought up to bring media light efficient. Usually we change out the lights to LEDs. We make sure that there's no bleeding off site. Make sure that the same foot candles are pretty much maintained. So the site lighting, although we're not going to be changing out poles, we are going to upgrade the fixtures per code. That's going to be a requirement that building department always makes us do. So we're expecting to do that. The building itself has some lighting um that we're gonna upgrade, but we're not proposing to add any like wash lights or anything else to magnifying it. We're going to try to maintain the same look that it has now so that it's going to be a nice building at night and you'll be able to see a nice new facade. But it's not going to be like spotlights like a come and see us. We're not doing that. We're kind of know that it's been there for seventy years and the community knows that they're there. We're just going to provide a better looking building, a better um upgrade to that existing building. Um. Some of the same questions. Um, yeah, you saw we had that big old ball sign that seventy-six had for hundred years. Um, again, this is some this Chevron, so we are going to get rid of the ball sign. But, you know, there is a obviously value from a applicant or an owner position of having the height of the sign because it's well visible. But we also recognize that the ball, that's seventy-six logo. That's not a Chevron. So we're proposing the sign that was presented tonight. Although it is higher than the other Chevron that you saw, it's still within the height limits of what we had. What what is there now? Um, just providing a better, a newer upgraded um facade or image of the sign. We are required as you may know by state law to provide the price signage. So we have that and the actual signage of Chevron. So we combine them into one instead of having multiple signs on the site. So getting rid of the ball, seventy-six ball, I believe, our opinion is going to be definitely an upgrade and make that bring it up to code and make it look a little bit nicer. Um. Uh, the line of sight question, yeah, definitely. Um, we design these sites all over the place, all over the state. So we're definitely considered about safe, concerned with safety. Make sure circulation in and out of that site is going to be safe and easy and convenient for our customers. So that's one of the things we're definitely going to look at. It's line of sight. Make sure that this sign doesn't block that and it provides that safety site triangle that's required on the corners. Um, the canopy. Uh, one question was brought up about the lighting. It's basically a little light that is like going to sop it that washes the face of the canopy. The canopy is not actually backlit. So when you see these canopies, it's really a little strip light on top that washes the the face of the canopy. But again, it's not a neon fluorescent. I mean, it's not bright, the whole band. It's a wash. So the it gives us the the image at night to be able to see the color, but it's not before, a long time ago, they used to be backlit um where it was really a bright neon look and that that didn't really work in the community. So Chevron's changed that. A lot of the other brands have changed that backlit look because for that same reason, we're trying to not so much emphasize the the neon of it or the but still provide the corporate color. So um, the canopy. I know you guys are going to talk about or consider the signage, the amount of signage. Um, if we consider the whole sign or the canopy of signage, it's going to obviously exceed the allowable signage for that location. So we would um ask that if you guys you know, consider the the signage of the sign, like the wording or the actual Chevron signage that would help us um meet our signage requirements and not exceed it. Um. So that's one thing that was brought up that will, you know, we ask that you guys consider that. And then um the bottom line is that we're trying to just upgrade site. Present a really nice building, a nice project, provide uh service and convenience to the citizens here, Corte Madera, and just have something that they don't have now. Right now it's a very small convenience store. Um, I drove the site a couple of times. It's not um you know, that it is not that uh welcoming, but I think once it's brand new, clean, new, all new landscaping. I mean, it's going to be a really beautiful site and people are going to be drawn to that and want to um go there for fuel or convenience store um um items, which we're going to be providing a lot more different options than we do now. So um anyways, so we're excited about it. Um, we're really excited about the project. We're interested in hearing from you. So with that, um, if I can answer any questions from the commissioners, uh I'm pleased to do so.
Okay, thank you. Um. So I'm going to turn to the other commissioners and I'll ask you questions. We can do that here. Um.
Pardon me, Chairman Chase, perhaps you would like to call for a vote to extend the meeting?
Um, yeah, I was going to do that um at is that clock in fifteen? Yeah, okay. Fifteen minutes. Um, so we could do that now. Um, we don't know how long it'll extend, but we need a a majority vote to extend beyond ten. So um, let's ask for that uh vote from the uh commissioners. Margaret?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Yes.
Okay, Valerie, you're one in the morning.
I am, but it's okay. Yes.
Mr. Rizzo?
Yes.
Okay, now I'm yeah, so we'll extend. All right. So Daniel, do you have some questions for these gentlemen?
Yeah, um. Uh. The the fiberboard uh material that looks like brick uh doesn't seem consistent with um materials used around town. It doesn't seem authentic. Is there an alternative material that you could consider uh to that that would be more uh would not try to emulate something that it's not?
Um, there are other materials. Again, the challenge is the the structure, the aluminum frame structure of that little building. Um, so we would actually have to build a a third wall if we were to use like a thin brick or some kind of cultured stone that's a veneer type. We could do that. Uh, we were but the sidewalks around that building, they're already pretty narrow as well. So we were trying to minimize the impact of having to widen the sidewalks even more to impact into the travel lanes. So that's the reason why we went with the thinnest material possible that would give us the look and still be able to provide that clearances. So it is possible, but it's going to impact kind of a little bit of a domino effect. It's going to impact the walks and the walks are going to impact the travel lanes. So um, that's, I mean, but it could be considered. I mean, I'm not.
It would be something I'd be concerned about going forward. Um. Uh, I would ask the same question about the um a similar question about the canopy. Uh, if you wanted to accomplish some signage, uh, are there examples at other Chevron stations where that signage might not uh be uh that sort of addition to the canopy, but maybe sitting uh beneath the canopy? Uh, the canopy is fairly consistent the way it is now with other canopies in town. If you look at uh canopies over parking and so forth. Um, so if there were an alternative to that band adding that band to the edge of the canopy, uh keep the form of the roof, I'd be interested in that.
Yeah.
Um. Would like to see some metrics on the lighting uh that are consistent with the town's regulations and and ideally dark sky uh uh parameters. Um. Uh. I'm interested in the analysis of the sight lines. Uh, but I would also say, given the proposed hours of operation, I think the kind of sign used at ninety Madera Boulevard is uh going to be more favorably received uh given the neighborhood and the hours of operation. Um. Uh. And uh, the other thing is I I I I need to look at the landscape plan more thoroughly, but uh uh I think trees, uh, you know, street trees along um Tamapaius Drive is is a look of the town. I mean, this is uh, this is a very key, as you know, very key location to the town. Uh, so if there's opportunities in these planting zones to put street trees in, you know, something other than Crete Myrtle that that takes you know, eventually maybe long enough, it could sort of be a tree, but uh I'd like to see that in the landscape plan.
Yeah, just to everybody comment on that. So the challenge we have is, you know, gas stations, we need to have in and out access to be able to come in. So we're not proposing to revise the driveways or any outside improvements. So we're kind of limited to little planters between the uh the driveways. But we are open to whatever it's uh city trees are approved. I mean, that was one of the items that our landscape architect proposed. I don't know if he spoke to planning or to our planner or not. But um we're definitely open to putting in something that you the city would would like, but just understanding we're kind of limited to the areas that we can put them in. But you'll take it into consideration.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Daniel. Hey, Margaret?
Um. I I'm going to ask this. I think I know the answer. The colors of the canopy and signage and probably the pumps, that's controlled by Chevron, isn't it? That's their, those are their colors, but you control the colors of the building and what goes on at the building. Is that
Correct.
Correct? Okay. And just to be sure I'm reading this because it's very small. The sign that you're proposing this uh instead of the the um globe is going to be fourteen feet, seven plus inches. Is that right? I don't have any other questions.
Okay. Thank you, Valerie.
This is the questions only, right?
Well, yeah.
Comments later? Okay. I have a lot of comments, but I do have only two questions. Uh, so I considering that the gas stations is old and has been historical to Corte Madera. Uh, we also know that old gas stations are notorious for the tank leakages. So since you are kind of a new um tenant, if you will, kind of coming over, taking over the existing gas stations, are there going to be any mitigations um taken uh in order to check for the leakages, repair the leakages for the tank that is underside um of the site?
Okay, so the uh the owner or the applicant is new. He just bought the property. Uh, but part of his purchase agreement, he had to, they had to provide a phase one um a testing on that to make sure and to provide any kind of monitoring they had on those tanks. So it's been monitored and reviewed and tested and has passed their phase one that shows that there's no leakage and that I'm not, you you know, when the tanks were replaced?
Uh, and it's phase
So ninety?
Yeah, double pilot wall and it's running twenty-four seven.
Yeah, so the tanks were replaced in ninety-seven with the double walls, um, tanks, and they're being mo- they're monitored as well. So any leakage would be detected like immediately. But nothing's been detected and the tests again, um the studies that were done uh prove that as well.
Great, thank you. And then um I also have the question about the canopy, probably everyone will. But um in regards to the strip lighting that you have mentioned, um, is there a possibility to uh perhaps house the strip light in the more directional housing so that it pushes the light downward a little bit and that not straight up. So this could help to mitigate this bright strip that is facing um, you know, almost like two sides of the streets as well as the residential neighborhood. I'm just concerned about the strip light to be on for twenty-four hours um there and being a bright spot.
I'm not sure if there's, if you Tracy, if you have that section of the canopy that shows how the site act the light is actually, but the lights under like this little curved socket and it lights down to wash the canopy. So it's not washing, it's not going out, it's going down. So the light at night, basically, you got the light is lighting the pumps. It's not going to be, it's not going outwards. And the way it's designed, I don't know if the section you have here in your package, you might show the light. Yeah, I see it there on the top. How the um on the top, the canopy kind of curls over.
There you go, the lower one.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Well, that one too, that's the other side, but that one, you'll see the lights actually at the bottom.
Hidden there. Yep.
You won't, it wasn't, it's not going to shoot out horizontally. It shoots down vertically.
But you still will see the strong wash um on that side.
You will see the wash. Yeah, that's the purpose of it to wash the wall. So you will see that, but you will not see the actual light tube or the light fixture itself.
Okay. Uh, I do not have any more questions. I just have comments to wait for those.
Thank you, Valerie. And um who's that other guy? Mr. Rizzo?
Yeah.
Thanks for your presentation. Um. I I see that there is an existing roof. Are are you planning on on re-roofing the roof? I don't know the age of it. Um, off the top of my head, I I didn't take a look at it when I was in town.
We're not proposing to replace it. We will repair as required and all of it is going to be a lot of a remove and replace as required if it's broken or in need of.
Is, do you know what it is right now?
Um, it's asphalt shingles, I believe.
Asphalt shingles? Um. And my second question would be the mini market. Are you uh planning on serving liquor?
Uh, it's going to be a type twenty, right?
Yeah.
Uh, be a twenty lights of ABC license. So it's beer and wine.
Beer and wine?
Type twenty.
And I'm not familiar. What's the limitation in selling the beer and wine? Is that is that twenty-four seven in California? I don't I don't actually know.
It's it's not.
You don't know.
Despite the hours of a business being twenty-four.
Despite the hours of a business being 24/7, there's a state code that limits the sale of alcohol cannot occur between the hours of 2:00 AM and 6:00 AM.
Right, but.
2:00 AM and 6:00 AM?
Correct. So no, no alcohol, alcoholic beverages between the hours of 2:00 AM and 6:00 AM.
And and are you going to resurface the the asphalt there or just patch and repair?
Patch and repair. I mean, doing any saw cutting at all for the project. So we're not planning to damage or ruin it or mess it up. So but again, if there is some uneven or some abrupt transitions, we could definitely take that into consideration. But as of right now, we're not proposing to do that.
Yeah, okay. As far as questions goes, I'm okay on the questions. Peter, thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Just a couple of questions. On the exterior of the building now, there's a couple of things outside. One is a big ice machine, presumably that would go away. The second one is that there's a enclosure behind it that looks like a mechanical enclosure of some kind. Does that go away?
Yeah, that all goes away.
That'll go away.
So a lot of those were like condensers or stuff that the mechanic shop would use. And as far as the mechanic shop being removed or the service base, any of that equipment that was out there, it's going to be removed. It won't no longer be required.
Okay, all right. Sorry to see the businesses go. So at this moment, then we'll see if there's any public, oh, you have another question.
I have one more question. Would you consider adding any EV chargers, given that you have three more spaces than are required by by code?
Well, the thing, the the thing about it, the spaces are at the gas station. If we do the EV chargers, even if we get fast chargers, let's say, one, the site's not equipped for that kind of voltage for high speed. It's a, it's a low 208 voltage. So that means we'd have to have them staying longer. So they wouldn't, they'd use up spaces that would be used for our people coming into the store. So the site's not, one, it can't do it unless we bring in a whole new 400, 480 volt and transformer to make it happen. And it just eliminated parking because it's, I know you say we have extra parking, but it's the fuel spaces are, the city's allowing us to count. So we are not considering, I mean, I know it's, we've done it at gas stations. It's not that, you know, we haven't done it before, but I think the limitations of the site and the existing facility not being able to handle that without a major significant cost to do it.
I think those EV people, why it's charging, they they buy a lot of stuff in the mini mart.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Daniel. All right. So Tracy, do you have anybody wanting to make a public comment on this?
I do not.
Okay, thank you. All right, so. Oh, yeah, I don't go away. We're not very formal here, but I think that we're going to let these guys make some commentary. You can sit down, but you may want to get up and respond to it at some point.
Okay.
So we we can do that in this kind of hearing. So take notes and then you may want to come back up and say something. So Valerie, go ahead and make your comments, please.
All right, thank you. Okay, so I think we can start from the first one, from the easy one. I personally not much in favor of the color scheme. I don't think it fits well with the kind of the area around. And also, I believe either Tim or Danielle have mentioned about that this is not consistent with the town of Corta Madera in general. So I believe that 90 Corta Madera has used a different color scheme, which I personally think is a little bit more pleasing. But again, this is very objective opinion, so whatever will be decided there, but I just personally think it's a little too warm, too beige-y for that side, maybe a little bit toned down. But also perhaps just digital representation, since we don't have actual color chips. Then my other question is on the landscape. So the, the question, I I know you mentioned you are not redoing the landscape, but since we are trying to create various climate action plans in Corta Madera, I was wondering if it could be a consideration for the landscape to accommodate the more permeable permeable pavement for stormwater runoff that would also help with the filtration of pollutants from caused by all of the cars that are going to be parked there. And another one is the little note that I noticed on the plan specifically. So you are proposing to reduce the glazed storefront. You elevating the windows a little bit higher. But I did notice that you placing a taller equipment right against the glass. So right by the entry on the right side, you have an ATM machine, you have recharge in the bunker. I'm not sure what exactly bunker is, but it seems like those are more of a taller equipment pieces that are going to be higher than your windowsill height. So I just was wondering if there is a possibility to place these items elsewhere so that you can actually provide that clear vision into the space a little bit better. And and I believe just a quick note that your, and you probably know that, that your signage plants elevations are just reflecting the color scheme, but they're not reflecting the new proposed elevation that you are showing for the south elevation currently. So this is just a discrepancy that you probably will fix once the plans are officially submitted. That's all from me. So I guess like the main comment, I would like to see the porous material to be incorporated in the landscaping for the pavement. That's probably the number one comment.
Okay, thank you, Valerie. Mr. Rizzo, while I'm looking at you, go ahead and make your commentary on this.
Sure, thanks. Definitely, I I think, you know, I mentioned something about the the night lighting. I think that that should be studied. I think that's been a concern of several of the commissioners. The monument sign bulk at the lower level, I I know that maybe perhaps it could be on a pole or something. I, I, there's a lot of pedestrians that use that that particular intersection. So I know Public Works might have something to say about that. But I would definitely encourage a study done on kind of visibility into that sidewalk. I actually like the old canopy that that there, it really kind of goes with the old building and kind of, it's been there for so long. I definitely think putting that the big large sign band around might, might be a shocker. And it is sort of a gateway property to our, our, our community. And I don't think that that particular application really speaks to the kind of, it's not very sensitive to kind of that particular site as we're walking, you know, moving into a residential area. It's, it's pretty bold. I think there's a lot of opportunities to do branding around the existing architecture in that site. And as the applicant had mentioned, it, people know about it. It's, you can't see those signs from the freeway. So there's almost no need to really overly brand something or super high that you can't see. It's, it's not like a freeway sign where you, where we're encouraging someone to put it a little higher to bring, to bring people in. I would definitely encourage some community outreach because of the proximity to the residential neighborhood as far as, you know, they're definitely for their hours of operation. Might even suggest getting a rendering done of the lighting scheme because it's going to be a big seller with their, with, with the variance. They're going to have to do their community outreach. And the last thing I'm really concerned about actually is, is the 24/7 mart serving beer and, and the kind of the transient traffic it's going to bring to into the middle of town there. It's one thing to have something right off the freeway, but it's a little bit further down into a close to a neighborhood. And it's the only place, one of the only places that's going to serve liquor late. And you're going to get, you're probably going to get a lot of people coming in and out of there between, you know, 11 and 2, where it's pretty sleepy town here after 8 o'clock. So those are all my concerns. And I hope that you take that consideration when you bring the formal application to us to review. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Jim. All right, Mr. Daniel.
Yeah, I I guess I repeat, I guess some of these comments by other commissioners. I'd like to see color samples. And I I would just repeat Commissioner Rizzo's comments about the canopy, canopy. I agree with him on that. I I'd like the landscaping to be sort of consistent with the surrounding, with what's on Tam Drive and what the town center has, and particularly I mentioned, you know, more, more canopy trees where you can put them in. Definitely would, would support a a monument sign like 90 Madera Boulevard rather than the taller monument sign again, like Commissioner Rizzo's comments. And I think that's it.
Thank you. All right, Margaret.
Why do you always say it like that?
Like what?
Um, I think I'm going to say right offhand, I think you have a real opportunity here because you have a a prime space when people come into the town of Corta Madera. This is an opportunity and it should be treated like that, to make this a real little showpiece. And I think I'm particularly concerned with first, the landscaping. Landscaping around gas stations notoriously become awful looking quickly. And I think there's a lot of greenery at the town center, and I think that ought to be a real piece of consideration here. I understand the need for driveways, but I think some real creative thought could be put into landscaping even closer up to the sides of the building. I think that would add a lot. I like the old canopy also, and I think it reflects the shape of the roof that's on the building now. I don't, I I think a four foot or however big it's going to be, straight thing just doesn't, just doesn't fit with the way the building is. I don't think you have to do that. I think what you've got is fine. And I, the big signs, I just don't think they're Corta Madera ready. The other thing I have a problem with is the color scheme and, and because there's such a contrast between the colors that Chevron is, is using and and the colors that would fit in more with the building. And I'd like to see you find some kind of happy medium to be there. I'm, I'm somewhat concerned with the sale of liquor for as long as the hours are as everyone else is. And so I don't know what, what you're going to do about that, but I think that it's, it's a concern in a, being so close to a residential area. But I'd really like to see you come back with something that says, we are at the entrance of Corta Madera and we're important.
Oh, thank you. Okay. Gentlemen, I will just run down the list here, given the hour and so forth. So the monument sign needs to be the smaller monument sign. I like Margaret's approach and say, this is an opportunity. So it really is, let's think positively here about it and the opportunity to create something more attractive. I think she hit the nail on the head there. It's not an opportunity for a giant franchise statement. So those things are that the monument sign, the canopy sign, if they make the plastic that you could extrude to the shape of that existing canopy, that would be fabulous, you know, sloped. And follow it up. I think that would be much more attractive, not four feet high. I think that's important. The materials on the side of the building, I did look up those materials, this Netecha, Netecha vintage wood color whitewash. I couldn't quite determine or I couldn't resolve what that product is in their catalog with what's in the drawing. Look at it. That's not the same thing. I don't get it. So anyway, material board is very helpful. And I agree with the commentary about the Valley's observation about the equipment backing up to the glass. Frequently, we've found that the interiors of these buildings have a lot of light sources that continue after dark. And what's inside the building is equally as important as what's outside the building. So I think that on the landscape plan, I agree with the general commentary of trying to amplify it to a greener, more lush or something more representative to match town center, that would be great. I did look up the dwarf heavenly bamboo. And it's probably used in California a lot. In other states, it's banned. Because they say it, it's bad for other plants and living things. But here, I don't know, California. So, but that's what I found. It's, it needs to be a sterile bamboo, as I understand it. So that it doesn't spread things. I think that on the 24/7 operation, that concerns me as well. I think Tracy's chart about the other businesses that are open late, the only one is the other Chevron station. I would encourage us to shut down at midnight and open at 6:00 AM. The pumps could continue to operate. It just is traffic coming in and out. I hate to say, I hate to limit the business, but I feel that way. I, I'm going to ask Tracy here, there's four things we'd be looking at, a conditional use permit, a variance, a sign permit and design review. Is that right?
Yes, sorry. Sorry about that. Correct. There's design review for all the exterior changes that are happening at the site, including the landscaping. And you're making designer view findings for signs. So there's, there's additional freestanding sign findings required by our municipal code. These are all attachments to your staff.
Right. Cool.
And use permit for the expansion of the mini mart within the building is, and the 24 hour operation, anything after 11:00 PM or 6:00 AM.
So I think that there are a number of opportunities, challenges for you guys to create something that the town looks at and says, wow, what a great service station. You know, not like, oh, my God, what happened to our nice corner? And I, under the findings that we have, it's, it would be hard, I'd be hard pressed to make the findings for all of these things that fit into the additional use of various design permit and the design review. I'd have a hard time doing that. So Vickers, anything else to add?
I have one thing.
Yes.
I I was just thinking that if you're starting a mini mart, and this is just an idea, that, you know, the town center has a that, you know, the town center has a farmer's market every Wednesday, and maybe there could be some coordination between I don't know, fresh fruit and vegetables on certain days or something that makes it that pulls you into the activity of the town center. That's what I'm thinking, that it should be, you know, it is kind of all in one big area and the town center is very active all week long. And that would be great if you could become a real part of that.
Hey, thank you. Um so I know you've been taking notes. Do you guys have any uh questions for us? Okay. Thank you. Um you're now the proud owners of a gas station, I guess. Right. All right.
Sounds like a good candidate for our beta testing for the uh reach codes.
All right, gentlemen, good night. Thank you. So we've committed to ten thirty, but you don't have to live by that option. So.
I I was just gonna suggest, given the lateness of the hour, that we can postpone the housing video to the next meeting, because it's about a ten minute video, so.
Is it posted or is it?
It is posted on a website, so I can send a, the link to the commissioners after the meeting as well. It's it's on our YouTube channel.
It's a good video, because I saw it when you had it at the town council.
Award winning.
So I'll follow up after the meeting with the the link to the the YouTube link.
Well, thank you. Okay. Um but that said, um we can either go on to reports or just adjourn the meeting, so I'll take uh feedback on that. At the moment, do we have, we don't have to do all that tonight, do we? No.
No.
Okay.
You can wait on that.
I vote to adjourn.
Okay. Daniel? You're you're voting too. All right, Valerie, you would adjourn?
I would adjourn.
Mr. Rizzo? You're only one time zone out there, right?
You're on mute. Yes, Jim, you're still on mute. Repeat your joke.
It wasn't that funny, I guess.
And just, just an FYI, the next meeting will be canceled. The July twenty seventh meeting will be canceled. Twenty fifth, thank you.
Okay, with that, let's adjourn. Thank you.